Action of the Forest Grove City Council. Uh, no public comment will be taken and the council will take no formal action. Let the record show that Councillors Gustafson, Council President Rippey, Councillor Martinez, Councillor Marshall, Councillor Valenzuela are present, Councillor Ewing is absent. And giving us the staff report is Community Development Director Brian Poole. And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Mayor Wenzel, who's meeting right now. Uh, thank you Mayor Wenzel, Brian Poole, Community Development Director with City of Forest Grove. Here before you tonight on Downtown Improvements. Um, this is the uh, next iteration of a conversation we've been having for quite some time. We'll outline soon. Um. Let's load it up, next slide please. By way of tonight's agenda, we will talk about tree replacement, uh, waste enclosures, trash replacement, tree lighting, and then we'll have a discussion about the different options. By way of background, we have held now two work sessions on this issue, uh, originally on June 24th of this year, and then again recently since the 23rd of 2024. Um, and in priority order, and of course, depending upon funding, the consensus has been to remove and replace all trees in the CDBG area that pose a hazard and/or are damaging infrastructure. Uh, you'll see a map here soon, so we'll go over those individually or as a group, I guess, here soon. Um, we also want to replace the trash receptacles with uh, larger trash receptacles and different design, and install electrical, install electrical receptacles in the tree wells on Main and then 21st between the alley. Tonight, we're looking to seek consensus on a final scope and budget for this project that will enable staff to draft a resolution and make any budget amendments that might be necessary. Pending approval, staff will bid this project in November, and we'll have construction beginning somewhere in February to April. Um, while some planting might occur then, remaining planting would occur. This is a kind of a new improved map, uh, based upon the feedback from uh, our last work session on 9/24. The trees recommended for removal have sidewalk and brick lift uplift and are damaging infrastructure or damage infrastructure. Uh, all told, we are talking about removing and replanting 19 trees, uh, replanting two missing trees, of course, we talked discussed before that some of the trees have already been pulled due to some of the dangers they posed, and so there are empty tree wells right now. Uh, remove four trees that will not be replanted, um, and retain 87 trees total. The uh, new varieties of trees will require. Next slide please. Um, as we walked around town and kind of looked at the different ways, uh, things were happening at these trees, a lot of these were just simply the grates were uplifting and things like that, and going and looking at some other cities, a number of cities have gotten away from the great, the grates, they're not using the grates anymore, they're using this, this sort of thing right here, it looks like just pea gravel put in a tree well, but there's actually a sort of treatment to this thing where it's, it's sort of one solid piece that you can walk on it, won't be kicking rocks around or anything. Called FPST, and it's a water pervious pour-in-place polymer material, flexible, resilient, uh, eco-friendly, many west coast cities have been installing this, uh, it's proven versatile, durable, and safer than pea gravel. So that's what staff is proposing to use in place of. The approximate cost to remove and replace the trees, repair the sidewalks and bricks, remove all grates, and replace the grates with FPST is approximately $180,000. Uh, please? With respect to proposed trash bin replacement, uh, we would gain, what you're seeing up here, we would gain a 33% increase in capacity. Each of these trash cans would go from 32 gallons per container to 48 gallons. Uh, they would have the Forest Grove colors and logo, they would have curved top to discourage placement of items on top of the trash can, that's not what's shown here, we didn't have rendering for that, but uh, that is what we've, what we're seeking to replace these with. Um, the front opening encourages use, obviously, and easy to throw your trash in there, easier to clean in service, and the total for 25 cans delivered is $42,000. $42,077. For the cost to remove and replace trees, repair sidewalks and bricks, replace the grates with FPST, and install new trash bins is $222,077. Getting to the street tree lighting, uh, we've kind of broken this down into two areas, Area 1, which you see here, um, on Main Street and 21st, the cost to add the street tree lighting here is $190,800. Area 2, that, that area between A Street and the alley, $39,750. Um, so to further break it down, Main, Pacific, Main from Pacific to 21st is $111,000, 21st from College to Main is $48,000, and additional junction boxes are $10,000 each. Next slide please. And so you're seeing these costs break, broken down in different iterations here, um, but you can see the costs that are, I'm not going to go and read each of one of these bullet points, but you can see the options here. Um, basically, the difference here is the lighting, I believe, is the only difference in these, in these kind of costs here, and they are broken out as follows. Next slide please. The city would have funding to fund any of these options. Um, staff is proposing to use funds as follows from the American Rescue Plan or ARP, uh, the balance that has to be spent by 12/31/24, uh, at present, that balance is about $150,000. The street fund could fund the cost of sidewalk and brick repair at approximately $50,000, and then the balance of the project would be paid for with 50% TLT revenues, 40% by the URA, and another 10% from the streetlight. So our next steps, obviously, tonight is to reach consensus on the potential improvements. Um, November, we would bring, we would begin outreach into business owners to let them know what to expect, what's coming down the pike, uh, how to, how to expect this would impact them in their business. We had bid and secured the contract in December, and the project will move towards construction in February to April. Slide. And so the jumping off point for discussion tonight is what option would the council prefer? And is the council okay with the proposed funding? That is all for the staff presentation for this work session, and staff is available for any questions.
Thanks. Councillor Valenzuela.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and all the work that you have done. Um, it says on the presentation that there is enough funding to get everything done, correct?
That's correct.
And I would advocate for us to get everything done now that we have the funding. Instead of waiting where, you know, the damage of a tree or something like that could be much more expensive to fix than if we get it taken care of now, so that would be my, my opinion about that.
I have a question. Um. So if we light the trees on 21st, and then we move forward with the festival street, are we like, I mean, I'm just concerned that we're going to spend money, because the initial festival street plans were to widen the street, do some different streetscapes, and so. I guess, long-term balancing the costs, are we, where are we at with festival street? And what do we, I mean, what do we think about? Could we renegotiate to not change? I mean, what do we do in terms of festival street and trying to do this whole project?
Well, uh, we've not moved forward the festival street, obviously, um, just because of lack of funding to do the festival street, obviously. Um, in its place, or I guess sort of in, as an interim measure, you know, this is a very much a placemaking sort of effort, if you will. Um, to the extent that it could conflict with later festival street design plans, um, obviously, I think that that could be an issue, you know? Um, I don't know that we're not recommending to move forward with that because of that, but that's certainly something the council can consider. Um, any future design of the festival street could accommodate these improvements being made, but understood why, why you may be hesitant for that.
Councillor President Rippey.
Uh, thank you, I have a, a question, clarification on the uh, slide that shows the map of downtown, not this slide, but the one that shows the lighting, lighting of the street trees. That one, thank you. So when it says, uh, 21st College to Main, are you really meaning, uh, from College Way to the Alleyway on 21st? Because the way it's stated there, it's just the part that's from Main to College Way. So there's four additional trees that are.
So. I think the intention of breaking that out is to give the council some options, so in that particular one where it says 21st from College to Main, that's literally 21st Avenue from College Avenue on the east to Main.
To Main, so that.
It doesn't include anything else.
Okay, so the light green area that is, uh, between Main and the Alleyway is not included in that.
That's correct, and if you look at the three options that we presented, really the only variance between the three options is what lighting plan you may want to choose. So in other words, all of them include the trees, they all have the FPST, they all have the, the trash cans.
Yep.
It's just a matter of how much you may want to light.
Okay.
Going back to the mayor's initial question, if you go back to the map.
Okay.
That shows the trees.
Yep.
If you did not do 21st between College and Main, um, which was one proposal for the festival street, another one actually went to the alley as well, and I think one proposal also went all the way to A. The trees that wouldn't be removed and replaced in that case would be those four trees that are on the south side of 21st.
Are orange colored.
Potentially, that are orange colored, the one with the star, we were proposing to remove that, uh, and have that be a potential place for, for artwork, as well as the one on the south side of Main, north of Pacific on the west side.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so that one would be still part of the project if the council decided potentially not to include Main. Most of the trees between Main and College are green, if you'll notice.
Right, I understand, so, so if, if I count this correctly, that's 13 trees on Main Street and a potential of six then on, uh, or depending if you go all the way out to A Street, now you're talking about an additional, uh, 13, so 13 one way and 13 the other way. But the cost didn't seem to work out the same, and I don't know why. Um, the, is the intent though, to light the trunks, it's, it's wrapping lights around the trunks basically? Or is it up and above where it's out of reach of people? Uh, what are you, what's the lighting intended to be?
My understanding of the lighting intent is it's to make lighting sort of possible, uh, to have electricity running to those, to those trees to make lighting possible, so to speak. I think that there'd be different conversations, I'm not positive exactly, but I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, different conversations about how that gets done, so to speak.
So we're only talking about laying the, the conduits to do the lighting, not the lighting itself?
That's correct.
So is then the con, the intent then to have conduit for each and every tree, or are you just gonna, are you, you're gonna skip a tree, you know? That's, I guess.
I think the intent, and Keith can correct me if I'm wrong, is to have a conduit at every tree.
At every tree, okay. All right.
Any other questions for staff before we start with discussion? Councillor Gustafson.
Um, the street tree fund that we have, is that a full goodie street tree fund, or is that part of the downtown district street tree fund?
Excuse me, the street tree fund is a total city one, and it's for people when they pay to, when they pay for permits, so some of the permits have been collected for downtown. We've always ran a balance in the street tree fund, it's never gone below a certain amount, so we were looking at using a smaller, a percentage of that potentially for this project.
Okay, good enough, thanks. Oh, and one more question. Um, are these, remind me if these garbage bins are lockable?
Yes. Or what?
They're lockable, so people can't just go in and pull the garbage.
Yeah, I believe they're lockable for waste management.
Okay.
They're lockable, and it's not really wide open at the top, so it's not like people are going to just drive by and stuff a whole garbage bag in the top.
Okay.
If they were going to do something like that, they're going to have to stand there for a while and feed it into the top.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, can we, Mariah, can we have the discussion questions on the screen? Okay, so let's start with bullet point one, what option would the council prefer? So it's partial funding, complete?
Can we bounce back to the options? Thank, thank you.
So bullet point one, is that for everything?
So bullet point one, just to be a little more specific, is that would do lighting on Main and then from the Alleyway to College on 21st. That's bullet point one, bullet point two is slightly smaller, that would light Main Street and then 21st from Main to College as opposed to the Alleyway to College. And then the third option is, um, just to light Main Street and not to light anything on 21st. And we just, the council can mix and match whatever they'd like, we just kind of threw this out there for conversation.
Is there one that's like, so there's not an option to light all of 21st and Main?
Uh, yes, you could do that if you.
But we don't have the fund, the funding wasn't drawn out for that, correct?
Yeah, it would add, Mariah, can you go back to the lighting, that one, it would add another 40, approximately $40,000 to option one, which would be $462,000 for option one, if you wanted to go all the way to A Street.
Okay.
In other words, it'd be Area 1 and 2 combined, which if you add Area 2 is about $40,000. That make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that'd be four, approximately 462,000, if you wanted to go all the way to A.
Can I ask another question? So when people apply for permits for downtown events, like what, what area are they most likely, I think like on first Wednesdays, it's just Main Street and then 21st to College Way.
Correct.
Like that L shape is.
That's the L shape.
And then, and for uncorked, it's the same. Oktoberfest went down further on 21st, and then the corn roast used just Main and College Way. Is there any other events that I'm forgetting that use that space?
Can't think of a lot of other events that go from, say, 21st from Main down to A, not, I mean, there's, there's Oktoberfest, and.
Light parade goes down Main.
Yeah, right.
And there's.
The new concourse market is now doing the T with the full Oktoberfest scheme, like, what is that called? The, when they have the concourse market, that's a routine thing now, starting this year, the past year.
It just, but they've only done it one time.
Correct, and now it's a, it's already been adopted by, um, the Rotary.
So.
I'm sorry, oh, I was just going to ask, so what, would you repeat what area they're doing?
So, um, it, it'll be the same as Oktoberfest, the, the full T, so 21st from A Street to College, and then Main from Pacific to 22nd.
So there's two ways that I'm looking at this, uh, first of all, I think Main Street should be taken care of. The question to me is whether 21st and how much 21st is done.
Correct.
So there's, there's two ways from, that I look at this, and that goes back to what Councillor Valenzuela said with regard to the festival street. The festival street, if we're, if we are undecided on how that's going to work, it wouldn't necessarily be wise to invest money in doing something that would later need to be torn out. But I don't know how long it's going to take us to get funding to do the festival street, because we're relying on a federal grant to do that. So the investment of that area is basically around $40,000, is that a terrible amount of money to put in now? And, and then later on, the festival street. Uh, so that's the, the two ways that I'm looking at this thing, and, uh, based upon the events that we actually have, utilizing that area, my recommendation would be to go to, do everything but Area 2.
I agree with Councillor, Councillor President Rippey on that, I think that the events that are using all of 21st right now are daytime events, those two events are happening during the day, and they're in the summer and fall where it's still light out, and I think that it's kind of a nice compromise of, if we do end up developing festival street, like, I mean, we're, we're saying, hey, we know that this corner is used a lot and wraps around, you know, monthly, and especially with like October's first Wednesday. So I, I'm in agreement with Area 1, I would just leave out Area 2 for right now, is what I, I agree with. Um, other opinions? Councillor Gustafson.
Just something else to think about, it, this isn't just about events, this is about, um, placemaking, and making our downtown district and inviting area for our community members to come and for tourists to come. Having just a short bit of light is great, I mean, I will take, you know, whatever, it'll be beautiful, you know, whatever we do, whatever we decide, but, but it is, it isn't about events, it's about placemaking, and it's a good, it's a, actually a fabulous first start as a city to invest in, um, our Main Street. Well, the street trees are going to be out anyway.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to either one, I know that where my business is, um, it's not very well lit, it, either I could take it or leave it, um, I just know past my business on 21st, it's residential, it's a residential house, so if it ended even, I mean, if it's only leaving out, in all reality, three trees, because past where we're at at Begets, there's residential, so it's not, it's only making up a difference to three trees, is it something that you only look at doing three trees as opposed to the other two that are down there and see if that's cheaper? Because that's where the business is at. So, I mean, it's just not lighting up in front of where Ridge Walker is, again, Pacific Donuts, and the other businesses that are right there.
I want to ask the staff a question, did you, so the funding mechanism that you used, did that include, do we have enough funds to do the, the whole 21st, the $40,000 extra?
I, I stopped at around the 423, I didn't, just for the top recommendation, I didn't look at the additional 40,000 for the green area on 21st. I was asked to come up with funding for about the 423.
And do, I mean, I'm asking you to make an educated guess, because you're real smart with our financial money.
I mean, a lot of us can come down to how much.
Wait, wait, let me finish my question, my question is, with ARPA funds, do you think we're going to come at over $150,000 left over? Or do you think it's going to be right at that or under it?
That's probably fairly stretching the ARPA funds, I mean, it's, there may be, there may be a little bit here, left here and there, but I won't know that until later on. This is what I felt comfortable being able to reallocate now, and so we got some other things that are still wrapping up, like the library projects, and it's, they've, they've been a little, little over budget, not a lot, but they've gone a little over, so I'm kind of waiting for those projects to get done before I finalize how much ARPA I think, I think I would have comfortably, if I had any luck to shift over to this project.
Would the council feel comfortable asking staff to start with option one, and if there's additional funding revenue to continue on that Area 2?
I would say yes, because as, as Councillor Marshall pointed out, going further down on, uh, 21st is only right now four trees.
Yeah.
To the end of the business section, which is not a lot, and if you don't include them, it kind of looks like you're cutting them off, and that's not the appropriate message to send. So if there's funds to do those additional four trees, then I'd go ahead for that, I'll take it back what I said earlier, if we can do it all, let's do it all.
And you feel, I see a head nod.
Yeah.
Okay, you have consensus from us to move forward on. Very cool. And it's the proposed funding, is it okay, is council okay with the proposed funding?
Yes.
I'm seeing head nods and yes. Okay, cool, thank you. I'm going to adjourn this work session on the Forest Grove City Council. Good evening, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council at 7:00 PM, will our city recorder please call, roll?
Councillor Gustafson, here. Councillor President Rippey.
Here.
Councillor Martinez.
Here.
Councillor Marshall.
Here.
Councillor Valenzuela.
Here.
Councillor Ewing.
Absent, excused.
Mayor Wenzel.
Here. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the, the land of the Tuolatin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Apalati, they are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. We thank them and honor them on today, this indigenous holiday. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where witness man, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Testing. Our proclamation tonight is for domestic violence awareness month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender identities, socioeconomic levels, religions, and abilities, but has been disproportionate effect on marginalized communities, and whereas domestic violence includes physical, emotional, social, sexual, spiritual, financial, and digital abuse, and can occur between family members, intimate partners, and within dating relationships, and whereas domestic violence impacts vulnerable victims, including children, as approximately 50% of child abuse victims in Washington County also live in homes with domestic violence, and these experiences in childhood increases the likelihood of struggles with addiction, mental health, school, and other challenges. And whereas Oregon sees higher rates of violence and abuse than the national average, with 42% of women and 39% of men experiencing domestic violence. And whereas Washington County has united to address the impacts of all forms of family violence, including domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse, through our Family Justice Collaborative, and whereas in 2023, the Family Justice Center served over 5,600 survivors, and the Domestic Violence Resource Center fielded 3,988 crisis line calls, and provided a total of 10,630 crisis services. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides a platform to show support for domestic violence advocates, crisis hotline staffs, victim service organizations, and the prosecutors and law enforcement officers who hold offenders accountable. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support to the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, resources, hope, and assistance to victims. Thank you.
Proclamación, mes de la concientización sobre la violencia doméstica. Considerando que la violencia doméstica es un delito grave que afecta personas de todas las razas, edades, identidades de género, niveles socioeconómicos, religiones y capacidades, pero tiene un efecto desproporcionado en las comunidades marginadas. Y considerando que la violencia doméstica incluye abuso físico, emocional, social, sexual, espiritual, financiero y digital. Y puede ocurrir entre miembros de la familia, parejas íntimas, y dentro de las relaciones de noviazgo. Y considerando que la violencia doméstica afecta víctimas vulnerables, incluyendo niños, debido a que aproximadamente el 50% de las víctimas de abuso infantil en el condado de Washington también viven en hogares con violencia doméstica. Y estas experiencias en la infancia aumentan la probabilidad de caer en la adicción, la salud mental, la escuela, y otros desafíos. Y considerando que en Oregon se observan tasas más altas de violencia y abuso que el promedio nacional, con el 42% de las mujeres y el 39% de los hombres experimentando violencia doméstica. Y considerando que el condado de Washington se ha unido para abordar el impacto de todas las formas de violencia familiar, incluida la violencia doméstica, la agresión sexual, y el abuso infantil, a través de nuestro Family Justice Collaborative. Y considerando que en 2023, el Family Justice Center atendió a más de 5,600 sobrevivientes, y el Domestic Violence Resource Center atendió a 3,988 llamadas a la línea de crisis, y brindó un total de 10,630 servicios de crisis. brindó un total de 10,630 servicios de crisis. Y considerando que el mes de la concientización sobre la violencia doméstica brinda una plataforma para mostrar apoyo a los defensores de la violencia doméstica, el personal de la línea directa de crisis, las organizaciones de servicios para víctimas, y los fiscales y los agentes del orden público que responsabilizan a los infractores. Ahora, por lo tanto, el Ayuntamiento de la Ciudad de Forest Grove, por la presente, proclama el mes de octubre 2024 como el mes de la concientización sobre la violencia doméstica en, en Forest Grove, Oregon, y llama a la gente aprender más sobre cómo prevenir la violencia doméstica y a mostrar su apoyo a las organizaciones y personas que brindan defensa, recursos, esperanza, y asistencia crucial a las víctimas. En testimonio de lo cual, ha suscrito la presente y ha hecho que el sello de la Ciudad de Forest Grove, Oregon, se emplace en este día 14 de octubre 2024. Nuestra alcaldesa, Melinda Wenzel.
We are now moving on to item B on the agenda, public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the City Council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless the majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand feature option to be called on. Okay, first up for public comments is Ms. Heather Rhodes. Can you come up to the chair in the front to give your testimony, please? Will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Heather Rhodes and my home address is 335 Farmway in Forest Grove.
Thank you.
Greetings, City Council members. Uh, on behalf of City Club of Forest Grove, I'm here tonight to bring forth an issue regarding the aesthetics and cleanliness of our downtown area, but more specifically at the moment, the street sweeping frequency and thoroughness. Based on the visual inspection of our downtown streets on a regular basis, we are not seeing a consistent and thorough sweeping schedule occurring, and this greatly impacts the aesthetics and welcoming atmosphere of our downtown Forest Grove as a whole. Streets accumulate debris quickly, especially during event season, whether it's litter, leaves, or dust. By sweeping consistently, we can prevent streets from becoming dirty and unpleasant and maintaining a fresher and cleaner look throughout the week. Many business owners have signed this petition that I do have, and I will have copies for everyone, stating as such as have residents. What's more, accumulated debris and waste can attract pests, harbor harmful bacteria and toxins, and contribute to air pollution through dust, dirt, and allergens. By sweeping the streets weekly, we can help prevent these risks while ensuring that roads, sidewalks, and public spaces remain safe and clean for everyone. Dirt, or dirt, leaves, and litter, if left unattended, can also clog storm drains, lead to localized flooding, and degrade road surfaces. Weekly sweeping can reduce the maintenance costs in the long run, making it a cost-effective solution. A more frequent sweeping schedule also helps prevent harmful pollutants from entering our stormwater systems and reaching our rivers, lakes, and green spaces, something we should all be concerned with. Clean streets directly influence how attractive and well-maintained our town presents itself to residents and visitors alike. Consistent upkeep will help foster a sense of pride in our community and create a welcoming atmosphere for tourists, something all businesses in town need right now. Weekly sweeping can therefore demonstrate this town's commitment to maintaining a beautiful and healthy environment. I close the evening with this. A town that is consistently clean and inviting is not only more enjoyable to live in, but more attractive to the visitors that could look to Forest Grove for shopping, dining, and entertainment endeavors. And working to improve the look and feel of downtown Forest Grove enhances the ability of tourism-boosting efforts to bring in more of those visitors and tourism activities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to give public comments? Seeing none, anyone in the audience who would like to give public comment who may not have signed up? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on. Thank you. We are now moving on to item C on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items or items removed from the, wait, removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
I move that.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, the consent agenda was moved by Counselor Gustafson and seconded by Counsel President Rippey. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved with a vote of six to zero. Item D, additions and deletions. City manager, do you have any additions or deletions for us?
There are no additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions proposed by council? Seeing none. Okay, we're now moving on to item E, which is our presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Our one presentation we have today is from the Domestic Violence Resource Center. And can I invite Ms. Megan Arbo up to the table in front, please? Does anyone hear from the?
She's on Zoom.
Oh, she's on Zoom. Oh, sorry, hi. I didn't realize you were going to be joining us via Zoom. Hello, Megan.
Hello. So I am Megan Arbo. I'm the Development and Communications Director for the Domestic Violence Resource Center. Um, I want to thank you for having me tonight to talk a little bit about DVRC and Domestic Violence Awareness Month, uh, slide. So Domestic Violence Awareness Month began as the Day of Unity in 1981, and by 1987, the day had grown into an entire month focused on raising awareness of domestic violence, supporting survivors, and mourning and honoring those who have been lost to domestic violence. Slide. At DVRC, our mission is to support and empower survivors and their children who are affected by domestic violence. We were founded in 1975 to address the needs of abused women in Washington County. And today, we provide wraparound support services to all survivors of domestic violence. Our services are always provided confidentially and free of charge. And we are also a founding member of the Family Justice Center of Washington County, where we provide advocacy, counseling, and housing and shelter support for survivors that come to the center. And we have three programs at DVRC, the first being advocacy and empowerment. Advocates are often the first point of contact for survivors in need of services. And services provided by the advocacy team include filing assistance for protective orders, safety planning, resource referrals, and much more. Uh, we also provide culturally-specific services for the Latina and South Asian and LGBTQ communities. Slide. Uh, we also provide free counseling services for youth and adult survivors of domestic violence. Our adult services include individual and group counseling. Uh, we also provide specialty therapy modalities like EMDR and art therapy. And we provide individual counseling services for children age five to 17, and also special groups for teens that focus on coping with conflict and healthy relationships. Slide. And DVRC's Housing Services Program is made up of three different components, the first being Monica's House, which is our confidentially-located emergency shelter. And this shelter provides safety for survivors fleeing high-lethality situations. And Monica's House is also home to Monica's House Pet Sanctuary and allows pets to follow their survivors into safety. We are one of the few organizations in Oregon that allows pets in our shelter. And our 24/7 crisis line is also run out of Monica's House. Slide. Um, DVRC's Transitional Home is called Mary Mack House and serves as a place for survivors to further stabilize their lives after leaving an abusive relationship. Sojourner's House is our permanent housing component, and this program is a partnership between DVRC Washington County and HUD, and provides survivors with their own apartment, financial rental assistance, and continued case management, um, from healing from domestic violence. And survivors that are in our housing program have access to all other DVRC services as well. And slide. And I just want to thank you for taking that little bit of time to learn a little bit more about DVRC and Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Um, I would urge you to share our crisis line with anyone that you know who may be in need. And, um, that's it for me.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions? I have a couple of questions I'll start with while my colleagues, um, think of some. So in the, on the programming slide, there was programs for teen, healthy relationships, which is really a protective factor going into relationships. I'm wondering, how do teens join those programs? Or do you push those programs out to Washington County public schools? I would just like more information about that.
Yeah, our, um, youth counselor has, um, relationships with the school districts in Washington County, and we also provide that group out of, uh, Home Plate Youth in Beaverton. So the Home Plate Group is, I believe it's a drop-in group, and then, um, we also provide that onsite at the Family Justice Center.
And then my follow-up question, different topic, but the crisis line, so Washington County's crisis line is 291-9111. If somebody can't remember your crisis line number, if they called the Washington County Crisis Line, could they just be transferred? Will Washington County Crisis Line transfer them to you?
You know, I do not know the answer to that question, but, um, if somebody were to call the Family Justice Center, we, you can get automatically transferred to our crisis line from that number.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Does anyone else on council have questions? Thank you for the work you do. It's the essential service that really supports our public safety, our police, our community. So we really appreciate your work and your efforts. And thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, we are going to move on to item F, which is public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. Item F1 is the second reading of ordinance 2024, I should just read the script. The City Council passed a motion at its September 23rd meeting, advancing ordinance number 2024-06 to a second reading on October 14th. If approved by the council, the ordinance will grant a franchise for Fat Beam LLC to conduct a telecommunications business and grant a right to use public right-of-way within the city. Are there any additional comments or evidence that staff would like to enter into the record?
F has no more additional evidence or comments to enter at this time.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for staff? Don't leave yet, but they don't have any questions. Okay, thank you. I'm just messing with you, Paul. Um, okay, any, is there any discussion from council? Seeing no discussion, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move that ordinance number 2024-06 be approved by the council.
I second. Okay, ordinance 2024-06 was moved by Counsel Rippey and seconded by Counselor Martinez. Will the city manage, or is there any discussion from council? No, we have two discussion places. Seeing none. Will the city manager please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance 2024-06 granting a franchise for Fat Beam LLC, a Washington Limited Liability Company, to conduct a telecommunications business and granting a right to use public rights of way within the city.
Thank you. Will our city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Gustafson. Counsel President Rippey.
Yes.
Counselor Martinez.
Yes.
Counselor Marshall.
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel.
Yes, the vote is six to zero. The ordinance 2024-06 is adopted by the Forest Grove City Council. Let me get organized. We are now moving on to item F2. Give me one minute to organize all my papers, please. Go ahead, do I start with gaveling? Yeah. The public hearing on the appeal of Planning Commission decision to approve land use file 311-24-000006-PLNG for Crane Data Centers is now open. Oh, now I gavel. Sorry. Should have read the script better. The appeal asks the City Council to reverse the Planning Commission's decision and deny the Type II Site Plan Review application for the Crane Data Centers at 3975 and 3993 Heather Street in Forest Grove. The City Council's decision will be based on the evidence in the record and any additional evidence or testimony we receive tonight. In addition, only those issues listed in the appeal will be considered by the City Council when making a decision. The order of tonight's hearing is: Call for absentions; discussion of ex parte contact bias in jurisdiction; presentation of the staff report; applicant's presentation, 30 minutes; appellant's testimony, 30 minutes; testimony in favor of the application, 3 minutes each; testimony in opposition to the application, 3 minutes each; testimony neutral to the application, 3 minutes each; applicant rebuttal and final remarks, 10 minutes; close the public testimony and staff response to public testimony, if any; questions from council to staff; discussion and motion. The applicant has the burden of proving that the application complies with all relevant Development Code criteria. The appeal statement in the record identifies the issues and reasons for the appeal. Testimony tonight should focus on those issues. Anyone who wishes to testify is asked to print your name and address on the public hearing signup sheet located in the community auditorium foyer, or raise hand, raise your hand in Zoom during the public testimony period. I will recognize those people who wish to speak. When called, please come to the table in the auditorium as the hearing is being recorded, or wait until you are called upon by the chair to speak via Zoom. Please state your name and address for the record and keep your testimony concise. Because our decision must be based on the approval standards in the city code, please address those criteria in your testimony. Any questions for the council or city staff should be directed to me pursuant to council rules of procedure. The presiding officer may limit testimony if a speaker persists being in a threatening and disorderly or abusive, following a warning to the effect from the presiding officer. If you already provided testimony during the applicant or appellant presentation, you may not testify again during the general public comment period. Also, if someone else testifies on your behalf, you may not also testify. Under state law, testimony and evidence needs to address the applicable criteria. Failure to address a criterion prohibits an appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Based on that criterion, also failure of the applicant to raise constitution Based on that criterion, also failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the application with enough specificity, that's very hard to say, by the way, to allow the city to respond precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Okay, a council abstentions. A council member who is not allowed to participate in the discussion or vote on a matter in which council members has an actual personal or financial interest. If it's not clear whether you have an actual interest, you should declare the potential conflict of interest but may participate in the decision. A council member is not allowed to participate in the discussion or vote on a matter if you are biased and cannot make an adjectible decision based on the evidence, testimony, and applicable code criteria. Do any council members need to abstain from participating in this hearing due to a bias or actual conflict of interest? No. Okay, seeing none. Ex parte communication is any communication on the application and appeal, whether verbal or written, that is not already part of the record. The staff report is, the staff report includes all known communication with the city councils, and therefore, these do not need to be disclosed. However, any ex parte contact not included in the staff report must be disclosed at this time. Does any member of the council wish to announce any ex parte contact or bias? The council must disclose the nature of ex parte contact made. I will start. So, I've been doing a lot of community engagement with our long-term strategic plan, and so at community events, people have asked me about this topic, and I've answered that I can't really discuss it because it might be appealed and it's quasi-judicial. But that's, I just want to put that on the record. Counselor President Rippey?
Yeah, for the record, I'd like to say that Representative Crane attended the Economic Development Commission meeting on Thursday to make a statement. I recused myself from the room during that period of time, so I did not hear what the Crane representative spoke.
Counselor Gusterson?
I had a representative from Crane contact me as the president of the city club, and I assigned further contacts to my vice president and recused myself. I have also been visited by a number of community members, of which I have let them know that I cannot discuss the subject.
Oh, Counselor Martinez?
So, I did come to the planning board meeting that evening, and I had a minimal discussion with Director Jacobs.
Okay. Do I need to do anything else at this point? Okay. We expect, oh, sorry, I almost skipped apart. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the Forest Grove City Council to hear this matter? Anyone on Zoom? I can't see the Zoom attendees. Ms. Woods. Seeing none, I'm going to move to list item 10. We expect the public hearing to last beyond two hours tonight. According to Council Rule 3.1, the express approval of the majority of a quorum of the council is necessary to extend the regular session past 9:30 p.m. Is there a motion to extend tonight's council meeting?
I would motion to extend it if needed.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. It was moved by Counselor Marshall and seconded by Counselor Valenzuela to extend the time if we need it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, it was approved with a five to one vote to extend the time. Staff report. Director Brian Poole will now present the staff report. Staff recommendation and state if additional correspondence has been received.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, Brian Poole, Community Development Director, along with Dan Riordan, Senior Planner, and City Attorney Chris Kreen is beside me to my right as well. Just for the housekeeping, we did receive several emails subsequent to the publication of the packet. I believe you all have access to them. These are emails from Delphic, Sherry Savoy Tintery, I hope I didn't bungle that name too much, Andrea Damico, David Hayworth, Dan Morris, Washington County Chamber of Commerce, Greater Portland, Raphael Manriquez, and they were all on your 3 p.m. packet update, so you have those. But those were received subsequent to the packet going out to you last week. Again, Brian Poole, Community Development Director here before you. Dan will also be helping me. If there are some questions you might have that might be more appropriate for Dan, some for me, some for the city attorney. So, we are all here as a resource to you as we unpackage this staff report. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission and staff decision to uphold, Planning Commission to uphold the staff decision to approve this site plan review for Crane Data Centers. I'll wait just a second while the PowerPoint is being brought up. Next slide, please. The purpose tonight is to hold a public hearing for the second appeal of a Type II Limited Land Use Staff Decision approving with conditions a site plan review for a new data center campus at 3975 and 3993 Heather Street in Forest Grove. And it's also for the City Council to decide if relevant findings of fact and conclusions were correctly determined by staff. Next slide, please. So, you know, we always start with background, and so I think the most sort of relevant background to start with here is our four distinct decision types, and they are just numbered. Type 1 is a staff decision that involves no discretion or interpretation, things like building permits, if you want to build a renovation on your house, sign permits, tree removal permits, no notices provided to anybody around the site, and it's only appealable by the applicant themselves. For a Type II staff decision, there is a limited use of discretion in evaluating the approval criteria, and these can be subdivision review plan, subdivision plan review, site development review. And in this case, notice is provided to property owners within 300 feet of the subject site. Next slide, please. A Type III decision is a quasi-judicial decision that must be reviewed by the Planning Commission, so the staff does not make a recommend, does not make a decision in that case. Planning Commission makes the decision in that case. It's appealable to the city council. This also involves a notice to property owners within 300 feet of the subject site. And there's sort of been a little bit of anomaly is the Type IV procedures, where this is where this council and Planning Commission act in a legislative capacity. This is when you are working on broad policy issues like comprehensive plan amendments, zoning ordinance amendments for, you know, different text amendments and things like that, and the zoning ordinance, things that involve policy issues and not individual property rights issues. Next slide, please. All four of these decisions involve some sort of appeal rights. A Type 1 is, again, appealable only by the applicant to the Planning Commission and later on to the City Council. A Type II process is appealable by the applicant or those who receive notice and comment to the Planning Commission and City Council. A Type III is a decision made by the Planning Commission that's appealable to the City Council. And again, a little bit of anomaly, the Type IV is a decision that is made by the City Council and appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. Tonight, when we say LUBA, if you hear the term LUBA, that is the State Land Use Board of Appeals, it's basically zoning court. It's the state's zoning court to review appeals and applications and things like that that are, that involved local jurisdictions' decisions and how they relate to the statewide planning goals or statewide statutes and processes. In this case, this was a Type II application for site development review made on January 31st, 2024. We did receive comments from four parties during the 14-day comment period, and the staff decision was issued on July 31st, 2024. Notice of decision was sent to the applicant and the four property owners who submitted comments during the 14-day comment period. That is all by Development Code requirements. Next slide. We received an appeal of the staff decision on August 12th, which was then run to the Planning Commission on September 3rd. Planning Commission upheld the staff decision on a 4-2 vote, and the second appeal to the City Council was filed on September 20th, 2024. And of course, here we are on October 14th, 2024, at this hearing of appeal to the City Council. Next slide, please. Tonight's hearing is an appeal of the staff decision to approve the site plan for the Crane Data Center, as well as subsequent, as well as a subsequent Planning Commission decision to uphold this, that decision. The singular question to be answered tonight is whether or not the proposed data center complies with the Forest Grove Development Code requirements for site development review. Want to pause right there and just sort of say, kind of affirm this on the record. There's no question tonight, or what is not being decided tonight is whether or not you like the data center, whether or not you're in favor of the data center, whether or not you have certain opinions on this. The only question ahead of you tonight is, does this development comply with the site development review criteria? The staff report unpacks that. We'll go through the appeal line by line to kind of show you the staff decision and the rationale for that decision. And just so you know, the City Council's decision tonight is appealable to LUBA. Any party who testifies tonight would have standing to appeal this to LUBA as well. Next slide, please. By way of background information and zoning information, this is the subject site outlined in blue, bordered to the north by the railroad track, to the east by Mountain View, and institutional property to the east, light industrial to the south, general industrial to the southwest, if you will, and again, the R7 industrial, or the R7 residential property to the north and west. The site itself is zoned light industrial and has been since 1980, and that will come up tonight again. Now, we'll get into the light industrial zone itself. There are certain uses permitted by right. When we say by right, that means that it's not required conditional use, that, you know, if a property is zoned a certain way, you have the right to develop the property in accordance with these permitted uses. The Development Code breaks this down into three separate categories of permitted uses by right. One is civic institutional, in which basic utilities are allowed by right. One is industrial, which allows light industrial, call centers, research and development, warehousing, wholesaling. And the other is the other category, which allows agriculture and information. The data center would qualify under information, under information we will cover later in the presentation. They're intentionally broad to allow for flexibility of uses that are not contemplated to fit within the categories. So, in other words, zoning cannot always sort of anticipate exactly what uses might come before the Planning Commissioner or before staff, and so they are sort of intentionally broad so that, you know, there is some limited use of discretion in deciding what falls under these categories. Again, in this case, for the data center, the information category was used. Development Code defines information as uses that are engaged in the following processes: producing and distributing information and cultural products, providing the means to transmit or distribute these products, as well as data or communications, and processing data. Included in this definition are those establishments within Center 51, that's NACs, 1997 edition, with the exclusion of motion picture and video display. And as noted in the previous slide, a data center is allowed under the information use category and the other category in the light industrial zone, and this is the definition for information under which staff determined that this data center was allowed pursuant to the uses allowed in the light industrial zone. The proposal before you is a development of a data center campus in two phases, with two buildings with footprints of 178,000 square feet each. Building 1, which is the southern portion of the site, would be 42 feet tall as the first phase of construction. And Building 2, which is the northern portion of the site, would be 75 feet tall as the second phase of construction. They would also include parking, stormwater facilities, equipment yard, landscaping. Also, there'd be a requirement for connection of Heather Street to Mountain View. The developer would be required to do what's called a half-street improvement, which is really kind of a three-quarter street improvement. The developer would be required to install sidewalks, storm drainage, curb, gutter, and 24 feet of pavement, which would then be figured, which would then be finished out by the city upon completion and acceptance of the street, of the street construction. Next slide, please. This is just a graphic representation of what we said for the site plan. Next slide, We'll get into the relevant criteria, and I think that you all know pretty well that many concerns have been raised, many concerns have been raised about the dimensional aspect of the proposed development, including building height setbacks, things like that. It's important to note, the city must review applications to the Development Code as it is worded in effect at the time of the application. There is a rule called the goalpost rule in Oregon, which is basically whenever that application is filed, you cannot change the rules after that. You have to give them an up or down vote or a decision based upon what rules were in effect at the time the application was filed. The review criteria for the type of application that is filed must be used for reviewing the application. We just said that. And this is intended to provide a level of certainty to both the potential applicant as well as the community. So, theoretically, if you look at, you know, what's zoned beside your house, and see that it's zoned a certain way, you should be able to expect that something will be developed in accordance with those rules at the time an application is filed. Next slide, please. So, site development review focuses on how a particular site will be developed, not on how it operates. And this will become important later as we talk about some of the sort of concerns that are not necessarily part of the development of the site, but are more about the operation of the site or the post-development. It also focuses on the site planning and layout and design elements. The Criterion and Forest Grove Development Code, and I will call that FGDC from now on, 17.2.450 include that the applicant demonstrates the site development plan complies with the base zoning district in Article 3, any overlay district in the general development standards of Article 8. The site development plan addresses the development standards in Article 5, which is the natural resource areas, tree protection, historic resources, when such uses are present on or directly adjacent to the site. Next slide, please. With respect to the light industrial zone, is a pretty open zone. There is no building height limitation. There's no required setback limitation. There are certainly requirements for circulation, parking, Department of Environmental Quality issues, metro, noise, vibration, smoke, heat and glare, insects, rodents, all those sorts of things. There are requirements for solid waste collection areas. There are requirements for landscaping to be provided. There are requirements for public improvements, including utilities, streets, sidewalks, et cetera, and more. I will say that for the sake of brevity tonight, these are all covered in the original staff report that you have had access to and have been able to read. Noise and utilities are enumerated as a basis for appeal, so we'll discuss that a little bit. But other than that, we won't go into detail about all of those things tonight because they are not on appeal. The things that are on appeal, and this is going to be a lengthy part of this presentation, so please just sort of, if you can hold your questions till the end, I think that some questions might get answered, and we will do our best at the end to answer whatever remains. There are, obviously, I think you've all probably heard by now, there are concerns about power consumption. This is an operational issue. It's not related to Development Code criteria. There is no criterion in the Development Code that requires that, that an applicant demonstrates that a certain level of power must be present at the site in order to gain site plan approval. Nonetheless, after land use approval, the applicant is subject to the city's line extension policy. And this means that, under this line extension policy, any required improvements to the system will be made at the applicant's expense. The applicant will have to pay for any of the improvements to this, to this system that will be required as part of their project. There are appeal issues raised as far as electricity and water rates for residents. This is, again, not related to the Development Code, any Development Code criterion. The applicant will be required to enter into a rate agreement with light and power, and those rates are set by City Council. Next slide, please. There was an issue raised as far as the review process used for the application. As we unpacked in previous slides, information is a permitted use in the LI zone. Thus, the conditional permit, conditional use permit is not required. This is a by right permitted use. Development Code Section 17.3.540A, site, site development review is required and subject to a Type II review process. This is a site development per, or site development review, the correct process was used, and the correct call was made. The requirement for a J-Tech report was questioned by, in the appeal, that is not required for submittal for site plan development review. Would be, however, required for building permit review, but is not part of the site development plan. Next slide, please. There was a concern about an exemption, exemption being granted in the conditions of approval for stormwater treatment. Not sure on answers other than this, no exemption is being granted. The city is not granting, granting any exemptions for stormwater treatment. A concern about potential traffic issues. There has been a TIA, a Traffic Impact Analysis, provided that recommended improvements to Heather Street intersection to improve safety, and that was just making that a four-way stop. Under water use, again, this is an operational characteristic, not a Development Code criterion. If city water is used, then a capacity analysis is required. If that capacity analysis yields that, certain improvements should be made. The applicant must make those improvements at their own expense. The applicant is failed to determine, demonstrate how noise and heat standards will be met. The appeal states that data centers can create noise levels up to 96 decibels. That, this noise level exceeds the permissible maximum noise level of the 70 decibels in the city's code ordinances, and 10 decibels above ambient noise levels are allowed under the Oregon Administrative Rules for New Industrial, or New Industrial Uses. Again, an operational characteristic. Again, an operational characteristic. The applicant must maintain noise levels within allowed limits to avoid code enforcement action. If it, if noise issues are observed as operational characteristics, they are enforceable by the city and by, I think, DEQ as well. But there's no required submittal of a noise analysis or construction details for the method of noise control. Next slide, please. There was concern raised about project phasing and whether or not the project should be allowed to be phased like this. It's not prohibited by, by development code. It is not an approval criterion, and you cannot base your, your decision on that tonight. There's concern raised that the applicant has failed to show that compliance with the conditions of approval is feasible, particularly public improvement condition number 24. The developer is assessing the use of non-podable, potable water in coordination with CWS. The land use application does not state what the non-podable water is or the developer plans on city water for data center cooling. This gets back to, you know, if, if they are going to use city water, there will be a analysis required, and that will have to be done, and improvements may have to be made. Engineering conditional approval number 70, water condition, water used in conjunction with construction of the project shall be obtained only from pre-approved sources. Just to be clear, I think there's a little bit of, of sort of issue with the staff report and the PowerPoint. This is only referencing water that's used in conjunction with construction. This is not operational water, which the data center is up and, and running. A permit, like any other development project, a permit to take city water for this purpose, has to be secured by the applicant or representative prior to starting construction. But that's just sort of the water that's used in construction of the building. Next slide, please. Condition number four only states that if city water is used, the applicant must provide a capacity analysis at their own expense, and they must pay for any improvements identified in that analysis. And again, condition 70 references water used during the construction and that they must secure a permit to obtain that water. Next slide, please. There were other issues with development code requirements raised in the appeal that recessed canopies or shall be used at the entrances of buildings to reinforce pedestrian scale and to break up large brick walls. The reality is that this is going to be reviewed at the time of the application coming forward as a building permit review, and those will be required at the time that the building permit review is done. It is true that all entrances must have canopies or recessed entries, but we will review that when the building permit comes in. Another appeal issue raised is that the applicant incorrectly states that the buffering and screening requirements of FGDC 17.8.425 do not apply, noting that all budding properties are zoned light industrial, railroad, or public right-of-way. Well, the appellant is correct that the buffering requirements of FGDC 17.8.425 do apply to this application. Site plan on-plan sheets PC1 and L1 show that a 20-foot landscape buffer yard between the industrial buildings and the adjacent residential properties zoned light industrial to the east, that that will be, will be provided. Site plan shows that, and it will be required. The code requires a 10 to 20-foot landscape strip depending on how landscaping or screening Another appeal issue raised was promoting good neighborhood design. That is not in and of itself a development code criterion. There's some mention these goals are found in the purpose statements, but there's a lot of Luba case law on this. Purpose statements are not regulatory. They're just that, they're purpose statements that explain what comes in the regulation and why it exists, but it is not in and of itself regulatory. So what you were to assume is that anything architecturally required is part of the purpose of promoting good neighborhood design. Another issue raised was potential loss of property values. This is not a development code criterion and cannot be used to approve or deny the application. Any sort of loss of property values is speculative even to whether or not it happened or whether or not, or to what extent. And that's why they're not a development code criterion. Concerns raised about the Rowan Green, Rowan Green data, data center, they are not germane to the approval of this application and cannot be used to decide on this application. Any timelines for power from BPA, and this is an operational issue and not a site development review criterion, cannot be used to decide on this application. There were concerns raised about deficiencies in the notes, specifically should staff have provided more than 300 feet notice? Should they have been issued in Spanish, English? The, the response we have here is that we followed our code. Subsection 17.1.515 tells us exactly how we are supposed to notice surrounding property owners, and that was done. Any deficiencies would be, might be a deficiency of the code, maybe, maybe we shouldn't in the future provide notices in Spanish, but the, the criterion was met. The notice procedures were followed. Whether or not the city should provide or require an environmental impact study, this is not required in the, in the development code anywhere. It is addressed through permitting with DEQ and, I'm sorry, Department, Department of Environmental Quality and Clean Water Services, but it is not a local level development code criterion and not a requirement in our development code. Electromagnetic fields and the consent, concerns about potential health effects of those, again, not a development code criterion. The applicant did address this, but it's not something that staff would use to decide this application, not something on which you can decide your appeal. Next slide, please. We've talked about this some, whether or not the data center falls under the land use classification in light industrial. And the appeal argues that data centers were not in existence when development code was adopted in 2009. I don't know, but I think that's probably assumed to be true. Development code references the 1997 National American Industry Classification System. I'll call that NACs from now on. And in NACs, we'll talk about that in a minute, but the land use classifications are based on broad categories of uses based on common functional product or physical characteristics that allow for present and future uses of the zone. And development code section 1712100 also allows that uses are assigned to categories description most closely matches the nature of the primary uses listed in the code. Next slide, please. And that's important because while data centers may not have been contemplated in a code from 2009, information was. In 17.3.250, table 312, information is permitted, is listed as an outright permitted use in the light industrial zone. We've defined this before, but this is back for your sort of convenience. See this again, under the NACs classification 1997, which includes online information services and data processing services. This is the justification for saying that this data center falls under the information category in the 2009 code as was contemplated in that, that time. Next slide, please. Other appeal issues raised, impact to wildlife. This property has been zoned light industrial since 1980, and the impacts to wildlife are not reviewed as part of the site development review criteria. This has been in the urban growth boundary since 1980 and zoned light industrial since 1980. Impacts on solar access. This is not a development code criterion for this type of application and cannot be used to decide on this application. Number of jobs created, whether or not it's enough or not enough. Site development review does not consider job creation. And again, this cannot be used as a criterion upon which you decide this application. Next slide. So in conclusion, there's sufficient effort, there's sufficient evidence in the record that the applicant has met their burden of proof to gain approval of projects, of the project. While concerns about this project exist, those concerns aren't rooted in the review criteria for the project. The review criteria for the project has been met. City council must base its decision tonight on the code criteria in the development code. Thus, staff recommends that the appeal be denied and the decision to approve the project be upheld. Side, please. Staff is available for any questions the city council may have about the staff report. There'll be a lot of testimonies following this, so you may want to have, sort of hold your, hold your questions about the data center itself, operations, aspects of it, or the applicant, but we're happy to answer any questions you have about the staff report.
All right, thank you, Brian. Any, does the council have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I guess I do have a question.
Council President Rippey.
Thank you, Brian, for your, the presentation. My question is around the idea of the phasing of the, of a development. And the question is, if a application is made for a development that's phased, but the development is, the information with regard to the other phases of development are not of sufficient detail to make a determination of whether the codes are met with, with that second phase, then how can, how can you, how can you declare that the criteria, the, the, the application is complete when, when you don't even have sufficient information to make a determination about that future aspect of the, because the whole business case for the, the company is based upon a full development of the full site. It would seem to me common sense that we should be able to also then make a determination on the full information for the whole project. And we don't know that. So how do you determine that that's a complete application?
Good question. In the development code, there are certain requirements for what has to be submitted as part of the application, and these are things like site plans, service provider letters from Clean Water Services, things like that. And so a complete application is any application that provides those documents to us. Anything that is submitted to us, we have to review as is. You know, we can ask for more information, but we have to kind of give the up and down decision based upon what is submitted to us. And what is submitted to us, again, I think you may be touching on some more, more operational sort of characteristics as far as power capacity, power availability, things like that. Those are things that, that indeed are subject to permitting down the road. What the site plan review really contemplates is that those dimensional sort of characteristics of the site, is it laid out in accordance with the ethical development code criteria? What are those criteria? And if so, we have to approve it based upon that. We would never say that there are not questions sort of lingering about this application. Indeed, there probably are, and I think the application, applicant can probably provide answers to those questions for you about future phases and things like that. But right now, what you're approving is basically a site plan that shows dimensions of buildings, building heights, parking areas, trash enclosures, things like that, of which they've met their burden of proof to, to gain approval from staff. The, the concerns I think you're probably getting into is sort of the more operational characteristics that I think I would probably defer to the applicant for, you know, sort of more information about what happens from here. But that's the way I can answer that question right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? We, you, we can ask you questions later, right?
You can ask us questions whenever you like.
Okay, great. I want to hold my questions till after, okay. I will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Do the applicants wish to provide testimony? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll come up to the front table.
And we have a PowerPoint presentation that is loading. How do we properly use this, these mics so we are?
I think they're on. Are they, are the mics, those two, I think two mics are on.
Is this one? Yeah, seems to be working.
I think this is okay too.
Do you mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Yep.
Okay, great.
You can just go down the line. Do you want to start, Matt?
Sure. My name is Matt File. Mailing address is 77 Van Ness Avenue, San Francisco, California.
Yeah, and I'm Allison Reynolds, Land Use Attorney with Stoll Reeves here, representing Crane, and my address is 760 Southwest 9th Avenue, Portland, Oregon, 97205.
And I'm Scott Franklin with Navex Engineering. We're the civil engineering consultant for the project. Address is 10135 Southeast Sunnyside Road, Suite 200, Clackamas, 97015.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're, we're set. Thank you. So, good evening, council members. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about the project, and as you've probably noticed, we have a team of folks here at the meeting, and I think also some folks joining us online who've worked with us. I want to first turn it over to Matt File with Crane to tell you about, a bit about the project and what Crane is trying to accomplish with this. And then I'd like to have Scott from Navex Engineering speak to some aspects of the site plan, and then I will finish our presentation by addressing some of the specific legal issues that are raised by this appeal. So, Matt?
Thank you, and thank you, city council members, for taking the time tonight. So just want to take this opportunity to introduce myself and Crane Data Centers. Having spent years working in the data center industry, I learned a lot about data centers and how important they are to the modern world. One of the reasons I left a corporate job is because I believed I could have a bigger positive impact on society by starting a small company that was focused on being a force for good. I wanted to develop data centers that serve the needs of society while doing so in a sustainable way. Our data center development in Forest Grove is designed to be both environmentally sustainable and also be a long-lived sustainable economic driver for the local Forest Grove economy for decades to come. The economic impact of our data center development will extend beyond just the employees and the property taxes we pay. The data center development will buy goods and services from local businesses, amplifying our economic impact. This economic impact will strengthen the services of city, the city of Forest Grove and can provide the community, you know, without further increasing taxes on the residents of the city. I'm passionate about data centers because these buildings are one of the most important foundations of modern society. Data centers underpin our society in ways like powering our cell phones, powering Zoom that many people are participating on this, in this meeting from today, online banking, Netflix streaming, et cetera. So they're really, really important, and a lot of times people think they're just a building. Well, they are a building, but they have the servers that process and store our data that, you know, we use on a day-to-day basis. Beyond this foundational importance, data centers can also be a power for good by being an active participant in communities such as Forest Grove. So on behalf of our small team of eight people at Crane Data Centers, I want to thank you for your time today. And then I'll just switch to the, the slides we have. So we're very focused on sustainability, and I'll dive more into that, you know, on a future slide, but it's something that we care a lot about, and we'll talk more in detail about later on. So can we go to the next slide? This is an exterior rendering. I thought it'd be helpful for people to see what we're envisioning at the site. So we obviously want to, you know, provide a data center that has function, but we also think it can be beautiful in the same way and provide, you know, open areas for our partners and our employees to relax while they're not working. So next slide, please. This is a rendering of the inside of the data center. Again, you know, this is, you don't see any machines, you don't see any servers. This is the type of environment that we want our employees to be working in, and our partners that'll be leasing this space from us. Or the next slide. This, I think this is actually important because this is one of the things that we, one of the ways we want to get involved with the local community. We actually are reserving space on the walls for local art to be displayed so that we can further promote, you know, artists in the local area. We also want to launch partnership with the, the local schools, basically to get them involved and knowledgeable about STEM. We think that in our industry, there's huge demand for, for workers, and actually, people don't even know what, many people don't even know what a data center is. So by exposing them to our data centers early on, we believe that they'll get to understand that these projects take, take engineers and architects to not only design and build, but operate as well. On the sustainability front, there's been some mention around water. I think the, the community was concerned about water. We heard those concerns, and we're actually going to be implementing, implementing air-based cooling for the first data center. So we won't be using water for cooling. And I think that's really important because a lot of people keep talking about water. We're not, and we're not using water for cooling for the first data center. Most of the data centers in Hillsborough use this technology. We, when we originally sited this site, we were actually excited because we got to know CWS, and they produce a lot of recycled water. Right now, they dump it into a river, and they wanted us to use that water. The city was concerned about the potable system as a backup to that if it failed. So we said, you know, okay, well, we'll pivot and we'll go to more standard technology, and that's what we're doing. It's very sustainable, it just doesn't use water. This building will be LEED certified, so we're going through the process to basically get that certification. We'll be utilizing renewable energy, and, and the actual energy we use will be very, very efficient. In our industry, we cater Uh, in our industry, we, um, categorize that by something called PV. Uh, it's a measure of, um, how much power goes to compute versus how much goes to cooling. Uh, a couple of other things, um, we're designing this for low, uh, low carbon concrete, which is one of the biggest causes of CO2 emissions in the, uh, construction industry. So we're actually, um, working with a local firm, uh, to use, um, basically, um, byproducts that offset, um, the cement, Portland, Portland cement, um, and reduce the carbon impact of the actual construction. And then the last thing, um, is we'll be capturing rainwater for flushing toilets and sanitary fixtures, um, again, reducing, uh, water consumption on site. Next slide. Just, uh, this is again, not pertinent to land use, but because I know there have been some, um, a lot of misinformation out there and maybe some of the benefits aren't highlighted, but we are building a new road, uh, and sidewalks that connect. It's an east, a major east-west corridor that's been on the city books for, uh, decades and we're, we're actually going to fund that and construct that. It will provide a way for, to alleviate traffic, even though we're not causing traffic, um, as well as, you know, increase safety in that back corridor, which I think people are aware that that's an issue right now. I mentioned waterless, uh, so the, the first data center is designed again, uh, to use air-based cooling. The, um, and then the last thing is, um, we've been working in collaboration with Forest Grove Light and Power for over three years on, um, how we are designing the energy system, the electrical infrastructure, and we'll be paying for that to deliver to our site, as was mentioned by staff earlier in the presentation. Uh, so we're not expecting to be subsidized. We're actually paying the cost for, um, those, those upgrades. Uh, next slide. Some other benefits, I mentioned jobs. Um, this is so, um, the pros of, uh, and there's pros and cons. Like data centers are not, uh, huge job creators, but the jobs that we do create are of actually higher salary, um, and higher impact. We also have knock-on effects in that we, um, our tenants will bring their own employees to site and we will also be, um, you know, basically supporting the local community. And that leads into the next point, uh, around investment and support for local businesses. A lot of our spending happens, you know, within, uh, the community. I had dinner earlier tonight in Forest Grove and every time I come, it's the same thing. I'm spending dollars to support local businesses. Um, and, and that's important for the local economy. The, the other, the last thing I'll mention is that from an impact on the community, um, we're not going to cause traffic, right? So, uh, you know, the benefit of not having hundreds and thousands of employees is that those plays are not going to burden the, uh, the local, um, roads. They're not going to cause traffic. And we're supporting the, you know, the local community with a healthy tax base that lasts for decades. Let's go to the next slide. And I'll pass the mic over to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Scott Franklin, Navix. So, so this slide just puts the, uh, the site in context and, uh, you can see with this slide, the areas that, uh, are within the city that, that allow light industrial uses. And it's a very small areas. It's really focused in this particular area. So it's, uh, it's, it's not a, a development or a use that could go anywhere within the city. It was intentionally located here within the city's comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. So, and if you're intimately familiar with the, 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 the package, the site plan, the utility plan, the grading plan, landscape plan and so forth, um, and, and I'm boring you, please stop me, um, but I'll, I'll take a moment to, to just walk through the site. Matt talked about Heather Street. Uh, that's actually an existing right of way that was, was created, uh, I think back in 2006 or, or thereabouts. So it's been in place for quite some time. And, uh, through this project, uh, the, the, uh, the development will build, uh, about two-thirds of that street, 24-foot wide section, sidewalks on the, on the project side and, relocate the, reconfigure the intersection of Mountain View and Heather and Poplar Street. There's existing, uh, tree down there that, uh, we've, we've worked around the, the, the tree to save that tree. And, uh, that's the, the primary public improvements are, are associated with, with Heather Street. The site itself is, is, uh, two buildings as, as we've discussed, uh, future substation that will be, uh, another land use process at a later date through, uh, conditional use process. And, uh, let's, uh, let's go to the next slide, please. And this, this slide just focuses on what is in the, the initial phase of development. Then, and as you can see here, uh, this is building one, south building. That's further divided into, into two sections, kind of the west half and the east half. And, uh, the improvements that, that we'll make with this phase allow this phase to be constructed independent of, independently of the, the future building two and, uh, substation. With this phase will be Heather Street construction as well. Next slide. This slide just identifies the preliminary grading and drainage that is associated with the overall development of the project. Uh, this identifies how we're dealing with the various different drainage basins and, and overall site grading and, and, uh, impacts to the existing wetlands that are along the site, uh, and which, which, uh, we'll talk about a little bit greater detail in a couple of slides. Next slide. This is the utility plan. Again, it, it identifies all the utilities that are associated with the operation of both buildings, building one and building two. And, uh, and it's, it's something that, that we need to work through so that we know how we're going to serve the full build-out of the site. We want to make sure that, uh, there's been some discussion about, um, not understanding the, the full build-out implications, not having, uh, enough information to, uh, to know how it's going to operate in the future. When we do the, the site planning for the site and the utility infrastructure and grading and so forth, we do have to plan all that out. Now, there are, are, uh, specific design elements of, of the components within the building that can certainly change over time. But from a site plan standpoint, that's all internal to the building and, and doesn't impact the, the site utilities or the grading that, that we have to do. Next slide. So the preliminary landscape slide, um, it, it does identify the landscaping on the, the east side of the building or east side of the development. Uh, there's been some, some landscape buffer questions about that and, and, uh, we've got another slide a little bit later on that, uh, that we'll talk about that a little bit more detail. Next slide. Over this one? You want me to cover it? Okay.
Please skip this one.
Okay. We'll, we'll come back to this slide.
Okay. Um, did you want to say anything to wrap up, Scott?
No, we'll, we'll, if there are any questions, happy to answer any questions that, that come through, um, and Allison will, will, uh, talk to you the rest.
Yeah, we, uh, sometimes have sort of a, a embarrassment of riches where we've all talked about so many of these issues and the question is always who's going to cover it, um, for, for all of you. So, um, thank you, Scott. I, I want to wrap up our presentation. Um, and of course we are happy to take additional questions and address anything else you'd like to talk to us about. Um, but by addressing some of the issues that were raised, um, in this appeal. And first I want to echo some of the comments that were made by Brian about the criteria for site development review and what the relevant issues are for this application. Um, you have received a lot of testimony and the planning commission did too, and I expect we will hear a lot tonight about issues that are important to the community and will be subject to review, but they are not part of the site development review criteria. And site development review is the first step of many reviews that this project and projects like it require. And the code is clear that this project will also require development engineering review, which is conducted by the city's engineering department in conjunction with partner agencies like Clean Water Services, a building permit, and that this project will need to meet performance standards like the noise levels during its operations. The code is also clear about the review authority for those items and how an applicant must work through this process. The applicant does not have the option to just start with an engineering permit. You have to go to site plan review first and have this sort of higher level review where you check all of the things that are part of this application before you get to those next steps. And so I think there were also questions along these lines during the planning commission hearing, and I expect we may get these tonight, concerns about why more information wasn't provided on some of these issues. Um, and the answer is that the project is required to provide that detailed information, but it's to the appropriate reviewer who has that technical expertise to determine if the project can meet those technical standards during that review. And again, the code is clear and it delineates where you go for these different things. And so tonight we are focused on the issues that are actually relevant in the application criteria for site plan review. So, and this is where the slide comes in. So one of these issues where, um, there were lots of concerns raised, um, is on noise. And the site development review criteria, as you heard from Brian's team, do not include a noise standard that the application has to address during the review. The noise standards that are relevant to a project like this come from a section of the development code that includes performance standards for all sites in the industrial zones. And that section requires that a use on the site, and so this is this proposed use, any proposed use that one would be looking to do, has to meet relevant standards from other agencies. And so this is a part, uh, Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, Metro, USCPA, that apply to that use during its operations. So for noise, compliance with the noise standards is demonstrated through noise monitoring, which a project like this, and this project will do this, would complete during its operations to show that it meets those operational standards. But we know that there were a lot of significant concerns. And also as a team is designing a project, they want to be very sure that whatever they design will actually meet those operational standards. And so the Crane team has been working since the beginning with a team of noise consultants. And we discussed the evaluation that that consultant did of the existing noise levels, which you can measure at the site with the planning commission and how we would ensure based on all that data that the project met the noise standards. And so we've though taken an additional step, um, for this hearing and we asked that consultant to provide a report that is in the materials that we submitted to you. And what they did in this report, and it's explained, um, they modeled the full build-out of the site. So they looked at all of the noise generating equipment for all of the phases, not just one building, all of the buildings. And they looked at how much noise and where that noise would be generated and whether it would meet the standards at the receptors. And so a receptor is, you know, someone that would hear the noise. This could be a home. It could be a business. And there are different standards that are set by DQ that were evaluated. And for almost all of the receptors, the project just met the noise standards and didn't require any additional mitigation. But for a few of the receptors, additional mitigation was needed. And that is actually a very typical finding that you see in a noise modeling, um, exercise like this. And so there are several options to mitigate for noise. And those include things like internal noise controls that you put into the equipment, um, and things like acoustical screening that wraps around the equipment. And so acoustical screening is an available and widely used technology. I'm sure projects have come before the city, including this body that have used that before. So we had the consultants model that for the project. And with this mitigation incorporated, those few sites that did not meet the standards before now do meet the standards. So the project, and we've demonstrated this through the noise report, when that operation actually occurs, it is feasible for us to meet the noise standards. We know how to do it and we've got the data. Um, so one other area where we also heard concerns, um, that Matt talked about, and there was some discussion, um, by the staff team. It sort of stems from that assumption that the project is going to require a large amount of water and that the city's systems may not be able to accommodate that. And as the Brian's team pointed out in their presentation, water connectivity and use for the project is also not an approval criterion for site development review. The code is clear that water infrastructure and upgrades that might be needed are determined during engineering development review, which is a review that's conducted by the city's engineering department and CWS. If the project can't meet those connectivity and use standards, it can't obtain that engineering development permit, and so it couldn't actually be constructed. But one of the legal issues that was raised, um, in the appeal is about condition of approval 24. And I think that was a, a very helpful discussion that Brian went through as to how that condition came to be. And it was through this discussion about the project potentially utilizing recycled water with CWS. And we just want to be clear though, that that condition is advisory and it explains to the Crane team what would be needed, how they would actually have to study and show that the water system could accommodate using the emergency backup or using potable water for emergency backup if the project wanted to do that. But as Matt noted, it's important to note that water-based cooling is not the only option for a data center. And we have provided, um, other additional information, um, about how, um, and we provided some of this to the planning commission, showing that it could be done for this project, but also had noted that there are many projects in the region that use this type of, um, air chiller or air-cooled chiller cooling. And this technology, it exists. It does not use water for cooling. And if, um, when this is incorporated into the project, like we've done for, uh, building one, we estimate that the project will use, um, about, and this is just for typical employee use, it would, um, be equivalent to one to two single-family homes. And that would be the full water needs for the project due to not needing the water for operations. All right, next slide. Uh, I think that was actually that one too. Let's go to the next one. And this is the next, this slide and the other, I think have been, um, adequately covered. But, um, these were two issues where the code interpretation wasn't clear. One was on recessed entries, um, and canopies, and the other is a landscaping buffer. And so for both of these, we have just provided you, um, with a, so for, um, canopies and recessed entries, we're showing elevations where we can incorporate all of this, showing how it would be done so that you have that material for, um, our site plan. And then, um, the next slide, um, is that landscaping buffer. And again, um, the project has always included this buffer area between, um, our industrial site and homes that are also on an industrial site. It is not clear if the code actually requires that or not, but we have voluntarily decided to meet that standard. And so we incorporate that and regardless of the interpretation of the city tapes, um, that standard is met. So those were sort of the, the high notes that I wanted to hit. But I, I think that concludes our presentation, um, unless you have questions for the team.
I have a question. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Guss then.
Um, so two different sections here with, you talked about employees and, and we know that, you know, data centers don't have a lot of employees. And we understand that. What percentage of local, and when I say local, I mean Forest Grove employees, um, do you plan on hiring? And if we can't reach that, do you have a, a support plan for the STEM program that you mentioned for our school district? And then the other piece would be, um, uh, our environment here in Forest Grove, uh, our climate is very important to us and climate change is real, everybody. And so we, you look around and it's, it's, we're in the beautiful country. So climate sustainability is extremely important to our community. So how do you plan on being carbon neutral in the future?
I was going to take those.
Yeah. Okay. So the, the first element, um, we are, we are actually going to, it's, I believe it's called, um, for us, first source or first, there's a employment agreement that we'd be executing with the city to source local labor. I don't remember what it's called, but staff could probably, uh, help me out there. But, um, we are, we will be, um, executing that, uh, once the project moves forward with the city. Um, and then as far as training goes, we haven't, obviously the, the project's, you know, a couple of years off because these things take time to develop. But we plan to basically outreach to the, the school that's right across the street. And, you know, basically provide tours, our local, the local operational manager. This has been done in my previous employer and basically it's ongoing. It's not like a one-time thing where, um, we get involved with the school. We haven't set it up yet, but that's something that we, we absolutely want to do and we think it's important. It's not just important because we want to be good neighbors and good community members, but, um, for our industry, we don't have enough skilled labor. We just don't have it. So it's really important for us to, you know, get kids exposed to it, um, and explain the connection between a smartphone or their video games and a data center so that they get interested in technology and science. And whether or not, you know, they work in a data center, it, at the very least, if they go into the technology field, that's something that, you know, I think our economy and local and, and national need so that we can, uh, retain those good paying jobs, you know, here within the community. Okay. So I think that was the first question. The second question, we're absolutely all about sustainability. And so one of the reasons we really wanted to build our first data center in the Pacific Northwest is the energy grid here, um, has the lowest carbon, uh, footprint in the entire United States. And so, um, that is one of the reasons we were focused here. That being said, you know, we can always do better. So we are actually going to build onsite, um, solar. Now, obviously that can't power the whole data center, but but it's something that, you know, to your point about sustainability is really important. I mentioned also, you know, the other parts that contribute to climate change, so, right? So one of the biggest inputs to our projects is concrete and others, other data centers as well. And so we're voluntarily, because it's important to us, basically going, and our GC, which is a local Portland GC, is working with a local concrete company to substitute a portion of the cement, which is the highest impact input into concrete around CO2. So there's a bunch of stuff like that. I mentioned purple pipe or rainwater harvesting, we're doing that as well. But that's absolutely top of mind and couldn't agree more with you around climate change and the need to address it.
Right, and you mentioned the, the air cooling, and I'm more familiar with immersion cooling.
Yeah.
So with, with the air cooling, is there going to be e-waste? And is your secondary solution going to be a immersible, eco-friendly?
Yeah, so if we go back to maybe like four slides, there's a picture of what that.
You zoomed by it really quickly.
Yeah, so, so this is actually what the chillers generally look like. And so what it does is because the ambient temperature in this area is generally fairly cool, there's a heat exchanger that basically says, okay, pulls in cool air. And for most of the year, we actually just have fans and pumps that are moving that cool air and moving the hot air from the servers to that loop, and then it goes out to the environment. For the small percentage of time where we need to actually use compressors, this operates a lot like a air conditioning unit at your home would operate. So it's effectively moving the heat from the outside, inside to the outside. For immersion cooling, that is a technology, but it's generally focused for crypto. It's very widely used in the world of crypto. We don't serve crypto customers because we don't think it's environmentally friendly. So I, I can't, we have talked to customers about whether they want to use that or not. At some point, they may, especially as cooling densities increase. But right now, we're not anticipating customers wanting to use that technology. And again, we're not serving crypto, so.
It was the refrigerant that would be a concern, the e-waste refrigerant.
Yeah, so the refrigerant in these units, we anticipate being, it's called a low GWP, so global warming potential. So absolutely, that's important.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
My question had to do with the building heights. So building one is 42 feet in height, and then building two is 75 feet in height.
Yeah, so we're building the first building first, and that's a single story. And so the second, as we've talked to staff about, there's, first of all, there's no, as you know, there's no height limits on the site. So all of these could have been super high. But we originally were thinking about putting a higher building to the south and a shorter one to the north. There were some, unfortunately, farmer-caused low-quality wetlands that were mitigating. And so we swapped that. That being said, we've done some calculations, and we actually don't think we need to build that high. And based on conversations with staff, we could in the future reduce the height without negatively impacting the project.
I'm just very blunt, sorry. So I guess what I'm wondering is, is there room for conditional use to agree to us a lower height? Like with this application, is there compromise? I heard what you said, that you might be able to make it not as tall. Is it, I mean, can we do that now or no? Probably not.
I think the term you're looking for is condition of approval.
Yeah, conditional of approval, yeah.
Just ratification, everybody on council. You know, all these decisions are sort of ratified with a decision plus conditions of approval for things down the road, certain operational characteristics and things like that. There is no, there is no condition of approval that references the building height right now. If, if, if the applicant is willing and council wishes, then you guys could broker a sort of additional condition of approval tonight to fairly limit the building height. But that's something that I think that the applicant should have a strong voice in as well.
Right, that's why I'm just wondering if there's, you had said that when you did some calculations, you did not think you would need to go that tall. So I was just wondering, do you know how, how many feet you would need to go on the second?
So just to clarify, we will not be able to build the second building without a conditional use permit for the actual substation. And so if we don't get that substation permit, we actually won't be able to build any data center there. And so I think it would be premature at this stage unless the, unless city council says we're going to give you a permit for the substation. And if the, if city council were willing to do that, we absolutely could make that compromise right now.
Okay, one more question. And then, I'm like, I'm not like, so one more question. I appreciate that the code says 10 to 20 feet buffer between the, and you're, and that all those drawings say minimum of 20 feet. Is there a guarantee that there's, it's gonna be a minimum of 20 feet?
I think on most of it, it's 20 feet with the diagram.
Well, I just wanna make, I'm just saying, like, I want to make sure that it's at least 20 feet. Because our, I'm like, I will admit that our code says 10 to 20, and I appreciate the fact that you're recognizing there's residential houses there, so.
So 20 feet will guarantee for any residential use. I believe there's one small area that is not residential use, which went down to 10 feet. And so that, is that accurate?
Yeah, a different standard applies to that situation. Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say that we have sought approval of a site plan, and we are showing and have been showing since the beginning. And that is what the decision of staff and the planning commission were based on. This is our landscaping plan that we've asked for approval of. And so if we wanted to change that, I believe we'd have to come back in for a different review. And I think that if it is important to the council, that is, I think, something we would allow or accept a condition of approval on because it is what our plan is for this site. And so if that is something where you really want to ensure that it's 20 feet and that, you know, any changes would require another review, I believe that's possible. Can you confirm that, Scott, from a site standpoint?
Scott Franklin Nebix, the only issue with that would be at that one pinch point near the access where it's a little bit over 10 feet wide, and that's a commercial use. But outside of the adjacent commercial use, like Allison said, we meet that standard and it just wouldn't be an issue.
So it's, there's a, if you look at the bottom right, so it's a southeast corner, there's an emergency access. And the turning radius, we had to design for the fire trucks to get into the site. And so that's the only pinch point that goes to that, it's just over 10 feet. But again, that's not a residential use, and based on code, that should be permitted. Or I guess it was, it was approved by staff for that reason.
Yeah.
Just a couple, one thing that was said earlier, I just want to kind of butt in here, maybe unwelcome, I apologize. The applicant stated that if you would approve a, the substation alongside of this application tonight, I just want to be clear that that cannot happen tonight. It's a separate process, different notification. We'll be here again, so before I have a heart attack or anybody else does, that cannot happen tonight.
Right, so I guess to that point, I mean, right now, that the second, the second block, that's the taller building, that goes with that substation. So if that doesn't get approved, and as we've contemplated, we will likely come back for a different type of development on that site. It'll be a different light industrial use, different characteristics than this, different investment profile, different. There'll be a lot of other impacts to consider for that type of development.
Okay, thank you. Council President Rippey.
Yeah, thank you. I have quite a few questions. The first has to do with the substation. Could you show a full picture of this whole site? And I want to clarify where the substation would be located. Is it that triangular area that's in this?
No, it's the rectangular box to the southwest of building two and directly west of building one.
That rectangular box there?
Yeah, and just to clarify, that's, that'll be a BPA substation. And so it's the whole, it's not a building, it's actually, you probably know this.
Yeah, I know what a substation, yeah.
There's just a bunch of equipment, so it takes up space, and that's, so that's where it'll go.
Okay, so, and then clarifying again, because you have building one, building two, but then you also have the building in phase two. So when you say building two, and I think the mayor was asking about the height of building two, you were talking about the building in phase two. But I'm, the building two height was 75 feet?
I was talking about building two, to the, to the north.
That's the one you're calculating possible lower.
Right, right.
And the height of building in phase two, you have no, you haven't determined that yet.
There's no building in phase, building two, phase two.
Is phase two, building two? Is that, I might be using different vernacular. I can't, I'm sorry, my glasses, I can't read what's on.
I can't read it anyway.
So, so we're, we're thinking about two buildings, building one on the south, and that's the shorter building. And then building two, which may be called phase two, I'm not clear on that, is the building to the north.
Okay, so then what is that large rectangular area to the, to the southwest?
That's the, that's a substation.
That whole area is the substation, oh, okay, okay. I'm getting clarified here.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, good, that answers that question.
Yeah, yeah.
So in, Counselor Gussupson was asking about jobs. Do you have a, an estimate on how many jobs in phase one?
We, in, so building one, we're anticipating 20 to 30 of our own. And then we think, depending on the tenant, and each tenant is different, we think that could add up to 50 jobs, like, in total. So it just depends on the tenants.
That answers that one. So, okay, so in building two, would you be also using air cooling for that one?
So it has not been designed yet. CWS has specifically, they want us to use their recycled water. We would have to run through the calculations.
It's up in the air, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, so we have, we have not designed the cooling systems for building two. Again, if, if that's a concern with the city, we can stick with air-based cooling. That's not a concern, it's very normally used. Again, we're trying to be good stewards of our neighbors and our partners. And so there's a tension between what the city, you know, resources is versus what Clean Water Services wants. And again, we're trying to sort of walk that line.
Thank you. So the next question goes to the air cooling system. So if you look those, those, that one slide that showed the air cooling.
Yeah.
Are those located on the ground, or are they going to be on the roof?
They will not be on the roof. They'll be in the equipment yards to the south and to the north of building one.
Okay, all right, so they'll be freestanding, exposed to the outside. Do you have, just out of curiosity, do you have any idea how high the hot air rises?
I don't. I've never had that question asked, I'm sorry.
But we have, we have wildlife in the area. And my question is, goes to whether or not the, the path of the wildlife that flies through the area is going to be affected by, by the height of that hot air.
Yeah, so, I mean, I've worked on hundreds of data centers around the world, and that's actually never been an issue, so I'm assuming that should not be an issue here.
Right.
Council President, would it be okay for Scott to add something?
Go ahead.
Yes, as part of the, the actual construction permitting, they'll will need to get a air quality permit from DQ.
Okay, right.
I believe that's where that standard would be addressed, so.
Okay, the next question has to do with, then, the, when you did your, your acoustic study and the, that diagram with all the colors, did that include the noise that was going to be generated by these heating systems? Okay.
It did, and just to note too, that modeled, we like to think about the worst-case scenario. And for noise, the air-based cooling generates more noise than water-based cooling. And so we assumed for that purpose that all of the cooling would be air-based. So if that is what happens, we know that the noise can comply. Water-based would be just lower noise overall.
Right, so the air-based, the air cooling is, generates more noise.
Correct.
It does, yes.
So the, one more, one more question. And that has to do with the landscaping, the around to, now, is the landscaping that's going on the perimeter intended to also abate noise?
No, I don't believe so. And I don't think that was taken into consideration at all by the noise study. I believe it was just assuming there was no landscaping on the site. It may further attenuate it, but we did not model or study that.
Okay. So I, all right. What I have seen in the past, this is just a comment then. So what I have seen in the past is where, in order to provide a more aesthetic look, companies will plant a row of trees, okay? They'll plant a row of trees, meet the requirement, and then never maintain them. And those trees, some of those trees will die. And, and, and so if there's an intent to abate noise with taller trees, then if those trees die, then you're losing the effect of the noise abate. And you said you're not necessarily doing that. But my concern would be that the landscaping around those areas would be maintained as a matter of course, not just one and done. We've got our project done, so we're moving on.
Yeah, no, that's really important to our brand. So effectively, our, our business is building data centers, leasing them out to clients. Our landscaping doesn't look very good, we're not gonna track that, so we move on. You know, our target tenants are world-class, they'll be bringing, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, if not billions of dollars, have their own facilities here. That's a baseline, so definitely agree.
Thank you for answering my questions. I'm done.
Counselor Martinez.
For now.
Okay, so on, can we go to the, the map of the decibels for the noise? So in the residential area, then, what would the decibels be? It looks like, what, 60 to 55, somewhere in there, potentially?
So are you talking about the light industrial areas that are, some of which have, because that's the.
So there's, there's, yes, there's some residential to the northeast.
The north, did we map?
To the north and the northeast, there's one, a small one in their corner there.
So my understanding is the code requires us to measure, I'm, I have a, my understanding of the code was that they, they are required to put on a transmitter. So at the benefit of all the neighbors to the north, it's like a train track, and that runs near our site, and they're probably, and there's a buffer on side, side of the train track in addition to the, much higher than our noise.
Well, the trains come and go. Your facility will not come and go, it stays, okay?
That's true.
So it will be a constant noise that comes from your facility. Saying that, I did watch a news report from April 7th of 2023 with, through WUSA Channel 9 News. And they did a decibel meter study and showed what the decibels would be in the area. And when they were right in front of the building, it was 57, 58 decibels. They were in a neighborhood 700 feet away, and it was 46 to 49 decibels, which is still quite high.
Where was it?
In Virginia.
And do you know what type of cooling they were using?
I don't, I don't. They have quite a few facilities there.
And there are a lot of those facilities, and I'm sure you're aware of this, are built four, five stories high, and they put the chillers on top. And when those were built, they also didn't have the noise mitigation standards that we have today for the actual equipment.
And these were some of the questions I had.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and that, that does depend, you know, what is the decibels going to be in these, for these people living around the facility?
Sure.
I mean, a const, you know, come in and go on train, that's one thing. But when you have a constant noise like that, it, they said, they can show it's caused stress, anxiety, heart issues, when people are continuously exposed to this kind of noise.
Sure.
Okay, and so, and this is, the CDC also states this, all right? So those are concerns that I have for our residents. And how far away is the, is the middle school from this area also?
Yeah, would it be okay if I can respond to that? So this is, every time I, I talk to noise experts, I am always re-surprised how complicated noise measurements are and how all of this gets, gets taken into account. Because you're right, that a single loud noise that doesn't last for very long is very different than a constant noise, maybe at a lower level, maybe a higher level. And so that is why this team and teams that do these kinds of projects work with expert noise consultants. We have a whole team of folks, and they understand the DEQ standards. So DEQ sets the standards for noise, and it is not the same standard for a commercial use as a residential use. You have to measure how far you are away, what kinds of equipment you use, where you put it, how you screen it. All of these things go into that account. And so that is why we had this noise study done. And so what we can tell you is that based on. And so what we can tell you is that based on the modeling they did, which accounts for, so they actually went out, they studied the site, they took all of the actual measurements. So we know what's there, and they did it over various periods of time. Then they put it into the model. And again, we use that kind of worst-case scenario where we said, we know the air-based chillers are louder, and so we are going to model those. We are not going to assume that we'll use the water-based chilling for Phase Two. If we had done that, I think you would not have needed mitigation at all for this. But we said we will take the worst case, because we want to ensure that this is going to meet the standards and that we could mitigate it if it didn't. And so I think that what we've presented to you and what is now in the record is an expert evaluation of this actual site and the facilities that we are proposing in sort of that worst-case scenario. And so I, as we also discussed, these noise standards are operations-based, but to the extent you are concerned, that is why we got you this expert data, and that's why it's in the record.
And I understand that, yes, it is within our decibel measurements and what our restrictions are, yet that isn't really, that doesn't meet the criteria when you're talking about trains and you're talking about a data center. Okay? So, and I understand it's, there's a lot of technical stuff involved with it and measurements, but still, it concerns me for the health of the citizens around there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming that the code has the standards that it does to address the health of the citizens, and so we are below those limits.
Yeah, if it was a train or a plane, great, so, but yeah, I'm not sure, like I said, about your facility, what other kind of buffering sort of measures can you put into place?
I mean, the great thing about our industry is that the technology is always getting better, right? And so I don't, I didn't read the report that you mentioned about Northern Virginia. I have done a lot of work there, and that is the world's largest data center complex. I mean, there's more data centers in Virginia than any other place in the world. And so it may have been referencing data centers that were built 20 years ago. I actually just don't know. What I can tell you is many of the chillers that are manufactured now versus 10, 15, 20 years ago, they actually have noise dampening included in the actual system. And then we were talking about putting additional screens around that to prevent that. The last thing we want to do is be, you know, causing anxiety and mental distress on the neighbors. That's just not good for anyone. So definitely hear your point. We want to always be using the best technology to address that concern and all the others, quite frankly.
Any other questions from Council? Councilor Gustafson?
So three more quick ones. I know Counselor Ruby was talking about tree sustainability, and we talked about employees. Is there going to be a dip in employees after a certain amount of time? So that would be question one. And then, how many data centers have you built, and what percentage of them have failed or closed? And the third one would be frequency. My husband's a sound engineer. What do you know what the frequency of the sound is that comes out of? The decibels is one thing, the frequency is quite different. Do you have an understanding of what the frequency of the sound?
So the first question around employees, I didn't mention this, but the actual construction will be hundreds and hundreds of employees, likely 500, 600 employees. So there will be a dip after the construction phase is done. After that, there'll be, you know, actually a ramp up of employees as servers are installed, and then it'll be stable. So that was the first question. Sorry, remind me of the second question?
How many data centers have you built, and how many have failed?
Yeah, so I worked at Google for 12 and a half years before this, and was involved with hundreds and hundreds of, actually gigawatts of capacity. None of them failed. And so we don't, we're using the largest data center GC in the Portland area, Ford, a company called Fortis. They've done this many, many times. They've built many of the data centers in Hillsborough. We're using engineers and architects that have done this, both in this region as well as across the country. And we don't want to take chances on building something that doesn't work, because we will go out of business if that happens. The last thing about frequency, I think I'm going to pass the mic. Do you all know?
I don't, that's gonna be...
Yeah, unfortunately, I think our noise consultant, and I don't know that she was able to be here tonight, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't say it in the...
I, my understanding is that that is not one of the standards that DEQ requires you to measure, and so I do not know that information, but that is speaking as a layperson who is just reading a report, and I am definitely not a sound expert.
Okay, that would be an interesting, actually a very useful thing to know, because the DBs are very different than the frequencies, and that can determine how irritating it would be for people near compared to, you know, one frequency versus another.
Got it.
Yeah, and I don't know if staff happens to know that information.
So Dan Reardon, Senior Planner. I don't know the answers to that question, or if DEQ has rules specific to frequency, but whatever the rules are in place is what would have to be complied with.
Yep.
I thought, if I may interject, I thought we passed an ordinance, a resolution, when McMenamins was doing their concerts, we updated our code with regard to frequency and decibels at each frequency level.
I don't recall that being, I know noise was an issue with respect to the concerts at McMenamins. I don't recall the code being amended to incorporate requirements around.
Yeah, we updated our code. I know for sure, we updated our code with regard to that.
And I don't know the particulars around that, if that's specific to just that type of venue, that type of use, or if it would apply more broadly. I do know in the code, in section 90, 91, there are requirements, and it's specific to maximum decibel thresholds, what type of use and where the noise is being received.
But not frequency, because that's very different.
Not that...
I think that's the difference, is we have it in the code, it's decibel, but not frequency.
Well, but I think the reason we updated it was because of the frequency. Our code was so old that it was not taken into consideration the higher frequencies that are generated by the more modern sound systems. So we needed to adjust the code to reflect the newer technology and the frequencies associated with that.
Maybe staff could look that up while we move along, because it's not really part of the criteria.
That's fine, yeah, I just, yeah.
That's all I have. And thank you for coming. I know this is a hard journey for us, and I know it's a very long one for you, so I appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? I haven't heard from you two. No? Okay.
Thank you. So now, do the appellant's wish to present the appeals? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dale Feek, 3363 Lavine Drive, Forest Grove, Oregon. I am Dale Feek, resident Forest Grove, starting in 1966, when I started my teaching career at Joseph Gale Elementary School. I retired in 2000, having taught students in seven Forest Grove schools. My wife, also a former Neil Armstrong Junior High teacher, and I raised our two daughters in Forest Grove. We love Forest Grove and want to continue it to be a great place to live, work, and play. Tonight, I am appealing the Planning Commission decision to accept the city's administrative decision to accept Crane Data Center's land use application. Before I present my arguments, and Crane had a lot of time, I noticed, they went way beyond their 30 minutes, and some people left that wanted to testify a thing. Anyway, before I present my arguments, why should you not agree with the Planning Commission decision? I want to remind you of what we, as a Sustainability Commission, were taught by Forest Grove's attorney. The attorney emphasized RS 244.01 policy. The Legislature Assembly declares that service as a public official is a public trust, and that ORS 244.10.5 states, "Public officials should not put loyalty to the highest ethical standards," should put loyalty to the highest ethical standards above loyalty to government, persons, political party, or private enterprise. So I also want to thank you, Mayor Winslow, for the statement that you made at your acceptance speech after being elected mayor. You said how important it is to be inclusive of public input before decisions are made. That's what this hearing is about. After meeting with Don, Dan Reardon, Senior Planner, Brian Poole, Development Director quite a few times, and a lot of other staff people in Forest Grove, I learned a lot from them. I appreciate Brian's willingness to call the city attorney to ask whether you, Mayor Winslow, could allow me to speak again after Crane replies to my presentation. Brian replied in email to me stating that, "I spoke with city attorney Chris Crane, and he said that you could ask to have a rebuttal period after general public testimony." But the applicant always gets the final rebuttal in these matters, since they carry the burden of proof from beginning to end. This is the way the council rules are written, and those rules reflect the way that appeal hearings are conducted at every step of the process. You're free to request that presiding, request that presiding officer, you, Mayor Winslow, to grant such additional time, but it's not guaranteed, and the applicant must still retain the final rebuttal. I want to emphasize, however, a few things that I disagree with. As you know, I hired land use attorney Ken Dobson to represent David Haworth, one of the four people who could have filed appeal to the Planning Commission. I was declared to the city to be agent of Dave's and attached a 47-page document to Dave's appeal. In my appeal to you, I also attached Ken Dobson's letter he submitted to the Planning Commission. I appreciate Dan Reardon's photocopying my appeal document for you, so that you can see, so that we can refer to the common page numbers, and I think you have it in front of you, is that correct? Am I correct, Dan?
So the city council has the electronic version of the document with the page numbers on them, so that there's a common reference between the pages. So if there are any particular pages you'd like to reference, the city council will have that information.
So if I say a page number, they'll be able to find that?
Be able to find that.
Or somebody can find it for them? How does that work?
Correct, yes.
Okay, well, we'll go with that. So please turn to page 135. I think you're finding it faster than I am. Have you found page 135?
Not quite yet.
Okay. Page 135 should be the first page of attachment D to the staff report?
Thank you.
Oh, it's up there.
Thanks, Mariah. Mariah has it up on the screen, good.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, I want you, I'm referring to the Forest Grove Development Code says supports various submitted requirements for site review, including diagrams, setbacks, and so forth. This is a phase development, wherein applicant seeks initial approval for the development of two approximately 180,000 square foot buildings with related parking, outdoor, storage areas, and so forth. The location of these buildings or related infrastructure are seen in the application's submissions. However, the applicant has also proposed to construct an electrical substation on the site with related infrastructure needed to power the data center. The applicant did not address the development standards associated with the proposed substation and related infrastructure in its current land use application. Instead, applicant simply showed the location of the substation pad and proposed to submit a separate application sometime in the future addressing the details of the electrical substation, how it will comply with the application approved criteria. This approach is putting the cart before the horse. While phase developments are not prohibited by the Development Code and are common with some types of development such as PUDs, this situation is different. Data centers are notorious for their massive consumption of electrical power. According to the U.S. Department of Energy, data centers use 10 to 50 times the energy per floor space of typical commercial office building. This power consumption will only increase, will only increase. A recent report by the International Energy Agency projects the proliferation of AI and cryptocurrency, said they might rent to them, will double data center energy demands in a few years. I also sent you a report by Mike Rogaway, who had a front-page article, two full pages in the Oregon, and this is part of my official public hearing, and you have that in your document. And there is a major crisis happening in Oregon, it's not just in Oregon, related to not having enough power to power data centers. I don't care anybody says, I trust Mike Rogaway about his statements. PGE doesn't have enough power, Bonneville does not have a power, they have to go to other places to get the power. Some of that power has to be fossil fueled, not as Crane says, they are sustainable by electricity. It's because of Bonneville, it's because they have dams. They're not creating power, they're using power from Bonneville. And Bonneville now is not having enough power to power the data centers, because we have a proliferation, especially in Washington County. And they're proposing a data center here in Forest Grove. In light of a data center's voracious energy consumption, the substation will be a critical component in the overall design and operation of the facility as a whole. Until the details of the substation operation are reviewed, it is impossible to determine whether the facility layout, as shown in the current site diagrams, will accurately depict the physical characteristics of the development. This is especially true considering the need for power lines and other related infrastructure for the substation, which the site layout will need to physically accommodate. For example, if modifications to the site layout are needed to comply with the applicable approval criteria in the future application, that could affect compliance with Forest Grove Code 17, called Utilities, and the Code Mechanical Equipment Screening as it relates to the current application. The facility is also planning on using massive amounts of water for cooling. Now, they say they're not. It's interesting how they're going back and forth on that. Anyway, water is a problem. They say it's not, but it's been a problem documented by most data centers. So the site development review is premature and should be put on hold until the applicant provides more information regarding these critical pieces of the proposed development. That's what I believe, and that's what was presented to the Planning Commission, and they didn't address that. Okay, where am I? Just like you, Mayor Winslow, I've got too much paper here, right? All right. But more concerning to me, but hope will also be to you, is what I found out after receiving information from my public records request about the email communications between Power and Light Director Keith Harmon, Crane Data Center, and Rolling Green Data Center, and Bonneville Power Corporation, as well as one small related to non-disclosure statements. I made that power request, and Mariah Woods, recorder and receiver of public records requests, has been very helpful. She worked very hard and got this data that I'm going to share with you about 5:30 on Friday. And so I spent a lot of time reading through long, 362 pages of documents, and made a similar, I made a smaller document, and I finally condensed it to a 10-page document, which I emailed to you before the 3 o'clock deadline. What is today? Monday, right, Monday, yeah. And that's what I want to work through with you. Okay, let's work it through. Okay, so that packet now, let's see where that is. You have that in front of you?
Mariah, do you think you could find that?
Oh, here it is, I have mine.
Yeah, you can find that for us.
What we're looking for is this document right here. It is BPA responsive emails, attachment from, it's this document right here. Would you let them know, Mariah, when they have it? Or you're finding it too?
It's this one, I think, right?
Uh, yeah, getting close. Go back to the top. This is working, because we don't need hard copy. And, there we go, got it. Okay. So the request I made in my public records request, I requested emails from Keith, of Keith Harmon... and Eddie Littleton to and from Bonneville Power Representatives, January 21st, and we changed that date to specific date, so it's not quite to the current date. Emails of Keith Harmon and Eddie Littlefield to and from Jesse Van Der Zandt about Crane Data Center and Rowland Green Data Center from January. And emails to and from Jesse Van Der Zandt, to and from Keith Harmon and Eddie Littleton related to Crane Data Center and Rowland Green Data Center. All right, those are important, and I'm going to make why they're important and why Rowland Green should be part of this, not excluded from it, as presented to the planning commissioners in there when we appealed, when it was appealed to them. I'll make that clearer. So in this document, Crane Data Center is number LO598, because they always refer to it by number. So you've got Crane Data Center is LO598, Rowland Green Data Center is number LO496. You have to keep those. And I just want to let you know, getting the truth, we want to get the truth, not cover up the truth. We want to get to the truth, we want to not cover up the truth. All right. So the first statement is October 2nd, from Keith Harmon to BPA Representative. I'm going to read it. "We have a communication agreement with Crane Data Center folks that was violated this morning when the funding group contacted you privately. They copied Adam from the Crane Group, but no one from Forest Grove knew those communications were happening. I will address this on my end with the Crane Group, but not from this point forward. Could we please have all communication requests go through Forest Grove? I've mentioned in the past the Crane Group doesn't concern themselves with following protocol, and I think when we get to project discussions with Dan Myers Group, we'll have issues if we don't stop it now." Okay, that was on October 2nd, 2023. And I'm going to skip now to page three of this document, if you would go to page three. And it's on May 20th, from Keith Harmon to BPA Representative. I didn't name the representatives, but I just, all right, so they're different, BPA Representative. I'm going to read it. "To ensure we're on the same page, this decision regarding LO496, which is Rowland Green Data Center, is not related to our other data center under LO598. Crane Data Center Group is still proceeding ahead and would like to move as rapidly as possible. Will you please get an update on where this project is? And could you also let us know how the decisions by Rowland Green and Crane Data Center?" My point is, these two have been working together for a long time. It's just not Crane, it's Rowland Green and Crane, and that should be part of this appeal, and it should have been part of the appeal to the Planning Commission also. This is the definitive proof that there is a nexus between information germane to Rowland Green and the Crane Data Center project. That information should not have been excluded from the appeal to the Planning Commission. And there are other, if you go to page six, for instance, well, all right, you can just take, I'll just take another one, you don't have to skip to it. Well, maybe you didn't skip to it. It's mentioned in many of these where you've got Crane and Rowland, well, we'll do April 24th. Reminded that there are critical independances between the plans for Crane Data Center and Rowland Data Center. So if Rowland pulls out in the next week or so, Crane will have to go back through planning to the review again because it would have a direct impact on the project. This is why the SCM team was hesitant to push forward too much on the projects with our engineers while there is so much uncertainty from the data centers. There is definite communication between Rowland Green and Crane, and there's a conflict in all that, and I'll explain what the conflict is. I don't know if I need to explain more, but that's consistently through these 10 pages, how there is communication between Crane and Rowland and the city, and sometimes they talk with each other and sometimes they don't based upon non-disclosure agreements. Now, why don't you go to page six, please? And it starts with, "The following email communications from my 42-page public records request, mainly from emails to and from City Manager Jesse Van Der Zandt, Keith Harmon, and other city staffs, as noted below." Can you find that one yet? Yes, found it. Okay, July 21st, 2021. This is the Jesse Van Der Zandt, Paul Downing, Eddie Littlefield, Brian Poole, and I don't know who that other person is from Forest Grove. I don't know if the attorney or not, I don't know. I don't know who that person is. The subject, though, is non-disclosure agreements, attachment. Rowland, non-disclosure, Forest Grove, fully executed. And it says, "Everyone, for viewing pleasure, have attached the signed data center non-disclosure agreement that we were discussing yesterday." My question to you, Mayor Wenzel, have you read that non-disclosure agreement? Do you know anything about it?
I'm not testifying right now.
I'm sorry. I assume you have not, okay? And I assume the rest of you as councillors have not read that non-disclosure agreement. It's a very important agreement to know about. Now, I have a question also, is there a non-disclosure agreement with Rowland Green? I don't know if anybody can answer that question, or should, can answer the question now. Maybe it's a question for the attorney. But if there is, it's important because there have been problems with them, okay? And one of the things that data centers do, they require non-disclosure agreements because they want to be secret about what they do. Of course, they're in competition to get money with other data centers, so they don't want to share some of their information. Some of those non-disclosure agreements are not good for a local community. So I think my point has been made that there has been, what some people would say, a collusion or a, that's not the right word I want to say here, let me say the right word. There has been a connection and talking between the data centers and the city, and it hasn't been open to the public and to other people. Okay, so where am I in my notes? All right, after reviewing some of those pages with you, which I just did, I have provided the information needed for you to not be held to the two statements held by Brian Poole. First statement, singular question to be answered. And that question is, whether or not the proposed data center complies with the Forest Grove Development Code requirements for site development review. That is not the singular question that should be addressed. Second question, Rowland Green Data Center process should, cannot be part of the hearings. That should not be a statement that's correct. I've just shown it should be part of the hearing, the Planning Commission tend to hear. That statement should not have been made, and I provided evidence to support that. These two statements, the planning commissioners were not provided the critical information that is germane to the application process during their September 3rd, 2024 hearing. All right, and I went to the 10, I already went through the statements on the 10-page document. Okay, now, I want to go to the other document. Okay, I did that. So now to the major document, the bigger document, we go to page 147. Find page 147, that's a big document. And then that's actually page 146. This is a resolution that I think, you signed it, Mayor Wenzel, and the other recorder before, Mariah, signed it, and Ruggles. This is exhibition in my, it's a resolution which was passed so that the, so that Rowland Green could give $6 million to Bonneville Power to get in queue to decide whether they could get power to Rowland Green. And so that's been signed. Rowland Green could not communicate directly with Bonneville Power, they had to go through the customer, Bonneville Power, which is Forest Grove Power and Light. So it was a transfer of money. This is an exhibit, and it was signed, but in going through what I read to you in that page 10 document, it appears that there was not a second resolution. There was another resolution for Crane. In order for Crane to be doing what they're doing with Bonneville Power and the decisions being made, there should have been a second resolution authorizing that. There was no resolution to authorize that, those kinds of communications. That should not have happened. Okay? And then in my appeal, I gave a lot of information there that I actually put the documents in that stated the money transfers. That's an issue. So I've explained some conflicts and some reasons why you should question how things were done in the Planning Commission and the communication that's occurred. So I explained the resolution for Rowland Green only, no council resolution for Crane. Power and Light Department making decisions to get power to Crane Building Number One, up to 10 megawatts of power. That power, that is power for a data center, not just for building auxiliary as proposed on Phase One. Now, the first building, they're requesting a 10-megawatt power. You don't need 10 megawatts just to run a business. You need megawatts if you're starting to do a data center. So they're starting to do data center business, and also they're making decisions by Forest Grove Power and Light and starting to get transformers to help get that 10-megawatts of power. So they're making decisions and making things operational before you've made a decision on the land use application. That's putting the cart before the horse. So in summary, you should not act on any of the possible proposed motions by the planning department. Get the truth, not cover up the truth. The only remedy is to refer this back to the Planning Commission. I'll repeat that. The only remedy is to refer this back to the Planning Commission. And that's what I'd recommend you do, not act on one of four, they say three or four motions that they said that you could act on.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Are there questions from the council for Mr. Feek? I have a question. Go ahead, Counselor Gerson.
I just want some clarification, so listening to all of that, it sounds like there's a transparency issue.
Big one, yes.
Would you agree?
Yes.
Okay. And I see and I feel the one where transformers were going to be purchased, I get that. What other big item transparency issue am I missing? Is there?
Well, the issue is how are you going to get the power? And you have to get in queue to get this power, and there is, data centers and other people can't, they can't get the power, and that's the reason Rowland Green never actually applied for a land used application. I always thought, a lot of people thought, that, you know, Rowland Green bought the acreage that's adjacent to and north of McMinnames. They bought the property with the hopes that they would build a data center there. Well, as they took a different approach, and Crane learned from this approach, they took a different approach and they decided that they'd buy the property and all that, but they have to decide whether they can get the power. And so they finally got a decision from Bonneville Power, and the decision was they could not get the 150 megawatts of power. They just couldn't do it. It's not available, they couldn't get the transmission lines, they couldn't build the substation to do it, so they didn't even apply for a land use application. Now, Crane's decided to put this in phases, and the phase approach is questionable. You know, it's just like industry sometimes, and I hate to say this, but, you know, stole rees attorney, we got a stole rees attorney representing Crane. Intel had the same issue. Intel ended up saying one thing, getting something out, getting it, and then they changed course and got a different way. You get to be upfront with this, and so by going a phase approach, they're going to get in the door, once you get in the door, it's more likely to get the other land use application, which is required because they do have a substation, and so this whole process is going to have to go over again based upon your decision tonight. If you refer it back to Planning Commission, you want to do that. Planning Commission addressed the issues that I addressed, but if you go ahead with this, then they have to apply for another land use application, and it goes through this whole process again. But Crane is doing that on purpose so they can get in the door, okay? And they should have, from my point of view, they should have done it like Rowland Green did, and they would have been upfront, they couldn't get the power. So now Crane, if they, as I think one of the Crane people said, what happens if we can't get the substation? Well, they'll have to decide to do something else with the property, and that's exactly what Rowland Green is doing. But they didn't apply for a land use application, but they finally decided they got the information because they had a resolution from you that could get in the queue to find out if Bonneville Power could give them the power. The outcome was, no, they could not give them the power, so they dropped it, because they couldn't get the power until 2028. I mean, we're talking about years, years away. That's what I think Crane should have done. Now, if they could end up having a building there, if you approve this, and they can't do anything with it in the way of a data center, they'll have to do something else with it and rent it out for something else except a data center. And so the decision you have to make is refer it back to the Planning Commission, get the facts out, don't have the truth uncovered, and, or you could make a motion that was proposed by the planning department, and they go on, and there'll be another land use application going to the Planning Commission, which I don't recommend. As I said, I recommend that you refer this back to the Planning Commission.
I had a follow-up question, Mr. Feek. What criteria do you think the applicant didn't meet? Like, in your testimony, you've said, so it's obvious, there was this communication, and I really appreciate the effort, the work, and, I mean, I know how much time it takes to go through all those materials, so I'm just, I need to align it with a criteria that you think the applicant didn't meet.
Well, what criteria applicant didn't meet? They ignored the idea of the phase because it was by statements by Ken Dobson that a phased approach can be appropriate, but not for this level of application. So did they, criteria? I don't know about a criteria for that. The thing that they didn't do is they didn't address the communication between Rowland Green and Crane, and it's a nexus, it's a problem, and that should have been addressed. So it's not really a criteria, it's a process, and it's a process problem that needs to be addressed, and I'm saying that you need to address it by referring it back to the Planning Commission.
Any other questions for Mr. Feek? Counselor Martinez?
I'm trying to get my thoughts straight here.
We'll give you a minute.
I think the big thing, it sounds like, is your concern because they weren't, they were working under the table, getting information, sharing information, and that was not part of the non-disclosure.
Well, yeah, they were working. You had a resolution only for Rowland Green. You didn't have a resolution for Crane, but Crane piggybacked on that, and Crane used that resolution for some of the decisions they're making, and so it's the piggybacking on an unauthorized way to communicate with.
So, I mean...
With Bonneville Power.
Right, with Bonneville.
Mm-hmm. And there's no question, I mean... I mean, data center people will say that we don't have a problem. But if you, you read Mike Rog- and I sent this to you, I already said it once, I think. Oregon data centers want a lot more electricity. Who's going to pay? It could be you. And this is part of the testimony. Mike Rogaway is what I consider is the, the best investigative journalist in Oregon on data centers. He's been writing about data centers for 10, 15 years. He knows more about them than most data center peoples know about it in the way of how they operate. All of them operate, not just one single, uh, data center corporation operates. And it's very clear that we, the rates are going to go up. And the rate's going to probably go up because of data centers and, and, and semiconductor industry. Because you, you have to get the power some way to operate these 150 megawatts. Even a 10 megawatt is a lot of power. And that can operate a lot of homes on a 10 megawatt. So if you start talking about 100 mega, second phase of, of Crane data centers for 100 megawatts. And they were already applying enough trying to get this 10 megawatts to, to, uh, to power the auxiliary building that they're saying is not a data center, but will be a data center. So it, it's, we, we got a major power problem in Oregon created by data centers. And I don't care what the data center people say. We have a major problem.
Counsel President Rippey.
So thank you, Dale. I have a question. I'm not going to dispute the, your general proposition that data centers are, we don't have enough information on them. We don't know what they're going to do in the future. There's a lot of questions around them. The bigger picture, I'm not going to dispute that at all. I don't, you know, my question to you is, why do you feel a denial of this site review process is the only way to address the bigger issue?
Well, what's the bigger, the bigger issue now is the land use, uh, application approval or disapproval. That's the big issue right now before you. Is that the big issue you're talking about?
Well, the land use, the actual construction permit is not, that's not part of this. This is a site review process. And so all of the questions with regard to water and electrical has been pointed out by staff is, comes along as the process moves along. So while there are a lot of questions, I have a lot of questions with regard to the enormity of the requirements that are coming down, not just in this one particular issue or one particular case, but across the state, across the country with regard to data centers. And I think small cities have an enormous challenge and problem with being able to address those concerns at our level without answers at a, on a bigger scale. You're asked, I think what I hear you asking us is saying that because this is such a big issue, we at this level need to deny a review in order to address the bigger issue, which is, which is the, 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 the general impact of data centers on society.
I'm not saying, I'm saying it's an overall problem, but that's not the reason you should deny it. That's not why I'm saying. The bigger issue is important and we are a small community, a little community in Forest Grove, being asked to, uh, build a data center in our little, s- small community of Forest Grove. And that the land available in Hillsborough is used up. That's the reason there are major issues happening now about land and how to get that land so that you can put semiconductor or more data centers. So, but the issue right now is in Forest Grove and that being data center being able to build on that property that Crane bought. So that's the, the issue right now in Forest Grove. Now, that's the issue now. So the big picture's important, but now we're looking at the little picture in Forest Grove. And I presented evidence that I think you really need to consider. The nexus between Roland Data Center and Crane Data Center and how that was not above board and decisions were made before about getting power, before it was ever brought before you. And that should not have happened. And that's what I'm saying you need to address.
Any further questions from counsel for Mr. Feek? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Has anyone signed up to speak in favor of the appeal? Please state your name and address for the record. So I have, I have more.
Application first.
We did the application. We did the appellate. Now we're on testimony. Correct? We're on 15?
In favor, yeah.
Hearings are held on each matter required by state law or city policy. The presiding officer will review the hearing instructions prior to public comment. When addressing the council, please use the witness table center front of the room. Provide your full name. Please limit your comments to three minutes unless the presiding officer grants an extension. All testimony is electronically recorded. Written testimony may be submitted by 3:00 PM the day of the meeting to citycouncilors@forestgrove-or.gov. The city council hearings are videotaped live and published. I hope, I'm going to try my best to say your names correctly, but I'm going to mess up. So Mr. Tim Sh- Sharman, I feel like I might have messed that up. And I apologize.
Yeah. So, or is this testimony in favor of the application, which is the applicant?
It says, it says, has anyone signed up to speak in favor of the appeal? Please state your name and address for the record. So these are people who are agreeing with the appeal, correct?
Madam, we, we got that wrong in, in the script. If you look, the heading says, uh, testimony in favor of the applicant. And underneath it says, in favor of the appeal. It doesn't matter as long as you try to group them together.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Well, so, so then this is in favor of the application.
Ideally, you'd start there.
You both didn't catch that. Sorry, Mr. Bull, that I didn't catch that either. Okay, so I'm going to scratch out my script. So this is in favor of the application. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Thank you for being patient with me.
My name is Tim Showerman. 20600 Northwest Quail Hollow Drive, Portland, Oregon. And I think I need to address that first. What is some old guy doing testifying about a Forest Grove data center who lives in Portland? So let me give you my background. I went to school from the first grade through high school at Forest Grove. I went to Pacific University and I have owned 11 businesses in Forest Grove in the last 51 years. I am here every day still at 80 years old, running businesses. So my interest is, this is my community and I care a lot about it. So I wanted to say that quickly because my address suggests something else. And we moved there because my wife got a job in Portland and the drive was impossible and we're splitting the drive. So I am a Forest Grove guy. Now, with that said, none of you probably know me because the things I did in Forest Grove, none of you had been born yet.
No. Exceptional ass, sir, but go ahead.
And I hope I can get it in three minutes because I have a visual here. There's nothing dangerous in this box, but it's the last thing I'm going to do. So if you cut me off, you'll never know what was in the box. I was the president of a company called Forest Grove Developments, Inc. It had a partnership with you, the city council and the city of Forest Grove, to do economic development. And I'm going to give you my simple answer of what seek economic development is. I owned an insurance agency here. That was one of those businesses. 90, 95% of my customers were from Forest Grove. So every time I collected a dollar, I was collecting it from you and spending it back in the community on wages, subcontractors, janitors, rent, and property taxes. And that was nice that that happened in my business and it happens in some of yours. What economic development is, is finding somebody who gets their money from outside of town. They make a service or provide a service that brings money back here that would never come here because it doesn't come from you. It comes from Pendleton, Oregon. It comes from New York. It comes from Norway because their product to service brings dollars back here. Dollars we would never get otherwise. And they get spent on salaries, contractors, janitors, public services, and property taxes. Forest Grove Developments was developed in a generation before me. My parents and my parents' friends who believed we needed industry in Forest Grove so that we had a third leg of the stool. The legs are residences who pay top property taxes, commercial retail people like my companies and yours who pay property taxes, and somebody from outside who brings money that isn't already here and pays property taxes and supports policemen, firemen, and schoolteachers. Forest Grove Developments developed two 80-acre parks in town that exist today. And they developed them in about 1975 to 80, and I was the president. There are now about 20 businesses out in the industrial parks on the northeast corner that pay way over a million dollars in property taxes and sell their products outside the city. It is new dollars. And that was our goal at the time. Now, how that happened and why you-
I'm sorry, sir. I have to have you, ask you to wrap it up because we're over the three-minute time. I'm sorry. I don't like to, but I have to.
I'm going to do very quickly to wrap it up as best I can. You partnered with us by building the streets and putting in the sewer lines and the water lines. That doesn't happen anymore. We bought the land and we sold it to those 20 firms. Along the way, this site showed up. We did not buy it because it was owned by 13 property owners. It wasn't an 80-acre farm. It was bought because a realtor in town got one of these non-disclosure agreements that Mr. Feek is so worried about. And that realtor put together 13 properties that make up this site. And ultimately, in a non-disclosure agreement, because nobody knew who they were, that's how these deals work. That site got put together from 13 properties and was bought by Techtronic's. We found out who they were after the fact.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. Sorry to cut you off.
Never know what was in the box.
Well, you said there was nothing in it, so you, I thought you already told me, but I'm kidding. Thank you. Thank you. And I'm sorry about that. If I give one person extra time, I have to give everybody extra.
This data center is going to be worth at least $100 million and maybe more. It will be the largest taxpayer you will ever see.
Thank you.
Without a doubt.
Barry Bolding. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Barry Bolding. My address is 6,000 Southwest Winters Road, just in Washington County, just outside of the city limits. I, I guess I'm here relatively neutral, maybe. But for the last 40 years, I have, um, delivered and built some of the largest supercomputers in the world. And I currently work for the largest data center builder in the world. Soon to be retiring. Uh, so as a technologist and scientist and engineer, I, I just wanted to come and, um, uh, say a few words that might apply to the, the application based on what I saw. For instance, I would love to see the acoustic map without the building in front. The acoustic map you saw had the building in front, which was shielding any of the sound going toward the houses. Um, I would make, love to make sure, uh, we see an acoustic map that doesn't assume the second building is built. The other thing that I, I, I want to make sure you understand as you try to make the decisions, uh, whether you will approve the actual constructions, sound versus water is, you know, the, it's just a zero-sum game. Uh, you, you use air cool, it'll be noisy. You use water cool, it'll be quiet. The thing that you don't know and that Crane doesn't know is what the technologies will look like by the time they get the buildings done. Because I will tell you, the average kilowatt per square foot was 10 to 20 times less five years ago than it is today. And most companies didn't predict that that was going to happen. So we don't know what technologies they're going to need to put in those data centers. And you're going to need to have a plan that is, um, where you take control of this situation. Uh, you mentioned that information is category in the other. You said that that is good because it gives us flexibility. But then I often heard, well, you can't be flexible. You got to go by the letter of what the, the ordinances say. The city council's going to have to be the one that's going to weigh that ambiguity in the information. Because as I said, that was five years ago. If you were writing the ordinance, you wouldn't know what was going to go in the data center. Those were written 20 years ago before cloud even existed. And you don't know what's going to go in the data center. So I would just say, you're going to have to decide these at the city council level. Not just the planning commission level. Sustainability, it's not about water, uh, volume. It's about change in water temperature. So if, uh, those, those 10 or 150 megawatts have to go somewhere. And if that water gets too warm, then it's going to go back into the, and it's going to hurt, uh, the ecosystems. So those are a few comments from me. But again, the acoustics, I would love to have you guys look at that.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm having a hard time reading the first name. Conan Wallace or T- uh, sorry, I cannot read Mandarin. And I apologize.
Excuse me. Uh, you want me to state my name?
Yes, your name and address, please, for the record.
Hey, my name is Tetonian Wallace. 2114 Northwest Second Avenue, Hillsborough. Mayor Wenzel and members of the Forest Grove City Council. Good evening. My name is Tetonian Wallace and I serve as Chair of the Washington County Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to voice strong support for the Crane Data Center project. Crane Data Center is a sustainable, community-focused organization. Their approach to development aligns with the values of Forest Grove and Washington County. Bringing a responsible project that supports growth without compromising our environment. We understand that the project has been approved by the city's planning staff and an earlier appeal was rejected by the Planning Commission due to its compliance with light industrial use criteria. Despite this, another appeal threatens to delay the project. We urge the council to uphold the Planning Commission's decision and move this project forward. The economic benefits are clear. This project represents nearly $1 billion in investment, generating hundreds of construction jobs and dozens of permanent high-paying positions with wages that surpass the regional average, directly boosting our economy. Crane has shown long-term commitment by working with community groups, local educators, and economic advocates to align the project with local values. They addressed concerns by adjusting their plans on water, power, and construction impacts. Additionally, they've agreed to fund the Heather Road extension, investing directly in local infrastructure. In conclusion, Crane data centers will bring significant economic and social benefits to Forest Grove and Washington County. This project will support the ongoing prosperity of the region while preserving what makes our community special. We respectfully ask the council to approve this project, which will benefit both current and future residents of Forest Grove and Washington County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wenzel and the Forest Grove City Councilors. I am Steve Crouchide. I'm the Board Chair of the Forest Grove Cornelius Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here tonight on behalf of our chamber board leadership. and I'm here tonight on behalf of our Chamber Board leadership located at 2417 Pacific Avenue. At the Chamber, we proudly represent more than 300 local businesses. Our mission is to promote economic growth, support local business, and enhance the quality of life for everyone in our community. This includes supporting projects that bring good jobs, investment, and sustainable growth while ensuring that these developments reflect the values and aspirations of our Forest Grove residents. We believe the Crane Data Center proposal represents an opportunity for our city. We believe it has the potential to benefit not only the business community, but the entire city of Forest Grove. The promise of new, high-quality jobs, technological advancements, and infrastructure improvements could strengthen our local economy and provide long-term opportunities for local businesses, residents, and future generations. We understand that with any large project, there are important questions and concerns that must be addressed. The Chamber fully supports the Forest Grove Planning Commission's careful and thorough evaluation of this proposal. We know they are working to ensure that the development aligns with our city's values and priorities, and we trust their efforts to balance the economic opportunities with the needs of our residents. We believe that working together, we can find solutions to allow for responsible growth while maintaining the quality of life that makes Forest Grove a great place to live, work, and do business. The Chamber stands ready to work with the city, our business members, and the broader community to ensure that Forest Grove continues to thrive for both businesses and community members. Thank you for your time and your commitment to thoughtful, balanced development in the city of Forest Grove.
Thank you. Tim Biedelman. Thank you.
Mayor, councilors, thank you for the time. My name's Tim Biedelman. I reside at 900 Southwest Fifth Avenue in Portland, and like one of the other testimonies, that is actually where I work. I'm a commercial real estate broker from Norris and Stevens. So I have over 20 years of experience of working through different developments, developers, different buildings. But I also lived in this community for over 10 years. We had an 80-acre farm just on the backside of Toalet and State Vineyard, working with the farming community and understanding a lot of the logistics and that side of Forest Grove. I've come to love Forest Grove, and like Steve had just mentioned, I also serve with him as the Chair of the Economic Development Commission. So this is a very vital portion of what is going to move this city forward. I think that they have demonstrated, they being applicant, demonstrated their willingness to work, to come to some agreements with changing their building size to their green space and making adjustments. And so the EDC supports the applicant Crane for moving forward, and I would respectfully hope that you could see all the merits of what the benefit analysis could be for the city and for Crane working in a partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Drake Hood. I think address is 36th. Not seen. Is there anyone, I'll read this for, is there anyone who did not sign up and wishes to present testimony in favor of the application? Is there anyone, did anyone not sign up that would like to testify in favor of the application? Yeah, come on, please. Should I cross your name off the other section? Yeah, you're, you're good. No worries.
My name is Michael Yakas. I reside at 3620 Summit Point Court in Forest Grove, Oregon. My wife and family and I have been residents of Forest Grove for 17 years now, and we've put all four of our children through the Forest Grove Stool District. And I just want to say that I've long supported economic development in Forest Grove. As one who's had to travel to Hillsborough for high-tech jobs and having friends who travel to Hillsborough and Beaverton, I think it's very important that we have options also in Forest Grove for high-paying jobs. I also feel that it's important that we do things the right way, so I appreciate the work of the planning commission. I appreciate the work of this council asking the very important questions. The one question that resonated with me earlier today is actually one that Mayor Wenzel asked is what criteria did Crane not satisfy as part of pushing the site plan forward? And just listening to all sides, it appears to me that the applicant did fulfill the needs of the zoning requirements in the city of Forest Grove, as evidenced by the city supporting the application moving forward, which is why I support it as well going forward. I think there are also important questions regarding the operations that need to be addressed, and I'm sure the city and the council will do those with due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to present testimony in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to present testimony in favor of the application? Please use the raise hand feature. Okay, Mr. Morris, Dan Morris will move you over and allow you to talk.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Dan Morris. I just wanted to clarify. I'm speaking in favor of the appeal.
Oh, no, not quite yet. Can we, I'll, I'll come back to you in a couple minutes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. No one on Zoom wants to speak in favor of the application? Seeing no Zoom hands raised, I will move on. Has anyone signed up to speak in opposition of the application? Please state your name and address for the record. And I have Suzie Jewett. Suzie Jewett. Maureen Murphy.
Maureen Murphy, and I live at 1812 Camerac Way. This building is going to be 20 feet from my backyard. I am concerned about the height of the building. I'm concerned about the noise. Do they know that it's only going to be 90 decibels? Do they know for sure how, how noisy this is going to be 24/7? I, I like to listen to train go by, but that goes by and it's gone. I'm not listening to it 24/7. I'm concerned about the birds, the geese that fly over. Yesterday, I was working on my yard, and I love to watch the geese fly by. It's a 75-foot building, and the vibrations and the noise, how is it going to affect the geese that fly over? My daughter says it's a magnetism and, and sun, but do they know that that noise is not going to affect the geese? Do they know that noise is not going to affect the animals in the wetlands? Do they know, do they know how much that noise affects the animals around our property? And 75-foot, that's a, that's a tall building right behind my house. If it was lower, I'd be happier because I don't want a 75-foot building behind me and the sun's not going to be there. But, but mostly, mostly I'm thinking of the animals, the geese and the, and the animals in the wetlands. And I don't, I don't quite understand how they can have, I know it was zoned, light industrial a long time ago, 1980 or something like that. But how they can have a light industrial, how they can have a building with that much noise, vibrations near the wetlands, that close to the wetlands and that, that, that 20 feet from, from property, from a person's property. But I'm really, I'm really concerned about the noise and effect it's going to have. I'm envisioning working outside with earphones on because of the noise. And thank you for bringing that up, the Council Lady Karen. Anyway, that's my concerns.
Thank you. Carol Allen.
Thank you for having me. I'm Carol Ellery, 4200 Pacific Avenue, Forest Grove. You know, I'm against the data center where it's going to be. I'm not against data centers. I'm against where it's going to be. First off, you're going to have a 75-foot monster in a neighborhood where there's elderly. Okay, I saw there's a whole bunch of elderly in that area. You've got, not only that, you have housing, you have the school, and you have families. There's going, there's going to be an effect. No matter what you think, there's going to be effects, going to affect the property. There's, there's things we need to consider. Also, we need to let you think about, because I went and sat on the computer today. I was looking up all kinds of things, trying to see something positive, and there's a lot of not positive about this thing. It says we will have, they will use an abundant amount of electricity, water, leave e-waste. We haven't even talked about e-waste here. What happens when those computers have to come down? Where do they go? Those are huge monsters. They're not little laptops like we have here. And also, the noise pollution, the massive generators that will need to run the computers, the cool and cool, the high amounts of water. This will bring waste that is over, over the years can contaminate local groundwater. Okay, maybe it's not today, but what about in the generations? Even when they were talking, there's all these variables. What happens when AI Bitcoin comes along? There's no guarantee that it's not going to cost more. They look at the, that over a 10 to 15-year period. In the beginning, you gain a whole lot of money. In the end, you lose a whole lot of money. So there's something that happens between A and D. There's a whole lot of stuff. And I agree with this gentleman here about the phases. I don't think they give you enough information. One of the things that I, one of, to put into perspective, a large data center operates at a scale of a similar to a small town. But that's not enough. The data center can use up to 6.57 million gallons of water per year. Now, a million gallons of water statistics show will build a pool about 267 feet long, almost as big as a football field, 50 feet wide, 10 feet deep, and the data center uses 6.57 million gallons. So that's approximately 6.6 pools, the size in one year of water. That's just water. There's nothing else involved here. In due time, I cannot go on about all the disadvantages like noise, e-waste, and how much electricity is being used with the effect on those who live close by the center. When you put up electric towers, they make a difference on people's lives, and that's a proven fact.
Thank you. Thank you. There is no one else signed up. Is there anyone else who did not sign up and wishes to present testimony in opposition to the application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to present testimony in opposition to the application? Please use the raise hand function, and we'll start with Dan Morris.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for waiting, Dan.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for the time. My name is Dan Morris, and I'm at 4400 Settlers Loop in Forest Grove. And I currently, there's, there's a business already there. And the noise from that business at nighttime is as close in, in terms of, of creating problems for, for sleep. If you open your window, it's, you get the sound of exhaust fans or, or what have you that, that already exists in that area. So this data center is going to compound that significantly. Now, in regards to the appeal, the data center may very well have met all the criteria for this application. But that application and, and how that goes forward has to consider the impact on the rest of the residents that are established there. For example, you know, you, you have the noise factor and the electrical factor. You have the loss of property value. These are things that, that are before the, the council as a result of this, this matter and should be subject to, to further review rather than rubber stamping and approving this is to say, wait a minute, we want to make sure that this goes, that we've checked all the boxes. This, this should not be in that area where you, you have so many homes. It has the potential, I believe, to even the noise to affect the, the school setting that, that's across the street. I mean, we're talking equivalent to a constant noise of a hairdryer or your dishwasher on 24/7 in, in your home. That is just not acceptable. It's important to bring in businesses. We under, I understand that. But it can't be sacrificing residents and their property values. So perhaps the, the council wants, wants to send it back to the, the planning commission to explore other options, to put ahead of time. There, that this will, will, the economic gains from, from this will, will create other legal issues, I believe, for, for the Forest Grove community and, and Forest Grove. And that, that would be non, non-beneficial. Just common sense is you, you don't build a house on, on the ocean at low tide. And with that, that's, that's what common sense here in this case is you don't put this building in the middle of a residential community. Just plain and simple. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jammy Gloss. Or Jamie Gloss, Jammy?
You got it the second time. Thank you. Um, hi, I'm, I, I want to start off by mentioning that the last time this land was zoned was in 1980. That was 44 years ago. My house was built literally the year before that. The next thing that we really honestly need to take into consideration is, is this something that's going to benefit the community in any way? Like he said, there's possibly five jobs, maybe, maybe top 12. But how many of those jobs are going to go to people who live here in Forest Grove? Most of these jobs are going to be outsourced to Hillsborough, Beaverton, Tiger, Portland. The next thing, granted, this is not considered with zoning, but it's going to go back to, again, this hasn't been zoned since 1980. We don't know enough about these buildings. How do we know that these buildings aren't at, they're not administering radiation? We don't know enough about these buildings, and that's where I have the problem because I don't know how that's going to impact not only the community, but the, the, the community's health. Like everyone's mentioned, there's a middle school and an elementary school back here. This is going to not only impact kids, but also majority of these houses in the neighborhood, we are low-income communities. So that's where my biggest concern lies, is we don't know enough about these data centers to say, yes, let's build it. And my concern is, is that we're going to go ahead, we're going to approve it based upon the zoning in nineteen-eighty with not enough information, and that they're going to break ground, they're going to break ground, they're going to build there, and then it's just going to sit vacant. We went ahead and jumped the gun, approved it, they built something there, and now, like the, um, elderly woman mentioned, now they've tapped into the wetlands. I honestly think that we need more information before we go approving something like this. And that's what I've got.
Thank you for your public testimony. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to give public testimony in opposition to the application? Seeing none. Neutral testimony, has anyone signed up to provide neutral testimony? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, we've got one more hand raised.
Oh, sorry, sorry, thank you. This is for opposition to the application.
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you for your time, everyone. My name is Paul Colleen, I'm a resident here in Forest Grove, uh, one-six-seven, one-six-six-seven Thirty-seventh Avenue. And, um, you know, I've grown up in this neighborhood, Cornelius Forest Grove. I actually lived in the neighborhood of Cornelius where they want to do this. I'm very familiar with the area and, um, what the gentleman was saying earlier, uh, that biz, that business that's currently across the street from your Armstrong. You know, I've ran track over there, played soccer. That place does generate a humming noise that's, um, noticeable. And it's only going to be amplified with the construction and the completion of this building. I work in semiconductor, so I'm very familiar with the noise pollution, I'm very fre- uh, uh, familiar with frequency, all this sort of stuff. And it's, in my opinion, there has not been enough research, even the, the, uh, the applicants, they're not even giving us concrete answers, you know? And there needs to be more research into all this stuff that's going to be, um, if they're going to be developing some sort of thing like this. Um, you know, working at the intel side as well for four years, I'm very familiar with, you know, working on main systems and subsystems and the noise pollution. That, I have to actually train people to be aware of and protect themselves. And it's not fair to the children, um, across the street nor the elderly community, because they had, they need help, I mean. Um, so there needs to be more research in this. Um, and it, there's, there's way more negative impacts than positive. You know, I'm really, the, the economic things, we, I'm happy for, you know, if we can improve the economic structure within Forest Grove, but it's, there's way too much negatives and way too much unknowns for me to be comfortable moving forward. Um, and it's, so what some of the people were saying earlier, you have a lot of people that are out-of-towners who aren't going to be living here, dealing with it day-to-day. Like I grew up with it day-to-day with that warehouse across the street from your Armstrong. Mind you, I played soccer there when there was just a field and there were no roads there. So, yeah, there needs to be, there needs to be more, um, research going into this, and, uh, there needs to be more consideration to the people that actually live there, because these people are coming from out of town and they're not going to be dealing with it every day. If they want to make hundreds of millions, that's awesome, good for them, but it shouldn't be at the expense of the people. And I'm saying as the expense of the people, because I also serve this country, and I want to protect the people that I serve, including everyone from council, everyone that's attending there as well.
Thank you for your pub, oh, sorry.
And that's, and, uh, that's pretty much it, and thank you for your time, just pretty pleased.
Thank you for your public, uh, testimony. Anyone else want to provide testimony in opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none. She, she'd already spoke before, yeah, okay. Um, is there another hand? Okay, and then we're going to move on to neutral testimony. Anyone, has anyone signed up to provide neutral testimony? Please state your name and address for the record. I have Jordan Miller.
All right, Jordan Miller, three-three-two-three Hillcrest Way, Forest Grove. Um, I'm here today because coming out of the last meeting with the planning commission that Crane had, um, I got a little concerned and skeptical when they referenced that they're going to be using local contractors, and then in the same sentence said that they're going to be out of Portland. And I left that meeting being concerned on, well, I think most residents here wouldn't consider local necessarily being hiring a company from Portland. Um, however, I had conversations with a few of my friends and basically most of my friends, I'm surrounded by electricians. So I had talked to four of my friends, and they each work at, they work at three different companies. Two of them work on the same job site, uh, they're lucky to be in Hillsborough. The other two, one's in Gresham and one's over in Clackamas. And all four of them actually have already been contacted by their employer, not from them asking the employer, but from the employer contacting them to ask if they wanted to get first, basically first dibs to be on the job site in Forest Grove if this data center got approved. And I know for two of them, cutting, well, at least for Clackamas, cutting two hours of a commute off their drive every day definitely is a, and is an upside for them. Um, but I just wanted to at least state that I was very surprised to come up with four people that are actually already in discussions with employers about potentially being relocated to these job sites, which would cut their commute to five or ten minutes. Um, they all have families, whether, you know, they're not necessarily thinking ten years in the future. They're also thinking, how am I going to put food on the table this month? They're living paycheck to paycheck, and as we all know, things have gotten more expensive nowadays. Um, so what I'd like to ask is if there's any opportunity within the city, if we ever get word on actually how many jobs are being created and how many residents are actually, that have Forest Grove addresses, or let's even give Banks and North Brains and Gaston, you know, loop them in there too, on how many people that we might consider local are actually being employed on the job site? I think it would be wonderful to be able to either know, okay, hey, it's only, it's only five people total from Forest Grove that get, got to actually work there, or hey, it's actually a hundred and fifty. And I doubt that the four people that I know that are already in discussions on it are probably, you know, ninety percent of the people that are going to be working there. So if the opportunity comes where the information's available, I'd love to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who did not sign up and wishes to present neutral testimony? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to present neutral testimony? I'm going to wait a minute just to make sure. Okay, seeing none. Does the applicant wish to rebut any of the testimony presented? Okay, can you come to the center table in the front, please?
Uh, hello again, um, council. Uh, we just had a, a couple of things we wanted to cover, and I think Scott may have a, a point too. So, um, first, Councilor Gustafson, um, we reviewed, while we were sitting, um, the DEQ and the city's noise requirements, and we also sent these to staff. So I don't know if you all got that email and also had a chance to review. And I believe we have confirmed that neither of these includes a frequency standard. So, um, we just wanted to check, um, because had that been in the standards, I'm certain our noise folks would have, um, modeled it. Um, and one of the early public comments, um, also brought up a very good point about the fact that building two is large and seems to block the sound generated from building one. And so we also wanted to note that our sound folks have modeled various different configurations on the site, and one of them that they modeled is, well, if you have building one and it's in place for a little while, um, before building two is built, what do you need to do to ensure that it meets sound standards? Because again, these are operational standards, they're not standards that we say, oh, we can meet it for the whole project and so we're set. Whatever is actually on the site and operating at that time, so if it's a, you know, half-filled building, if it's a fully-filled building, whatever that thing is, that has to meet the standards, because these are operation standards. And so, um, when they did that modeling for building one, so building two is not there to serve as sort of noise mitigation, um, it, similar to the full build-out, meets the standards in almost all receptor areas, but there are a few where that same sound screening applied as mitigation makes it to the whole project. Just building one can meet the standards. So I thought that was a very helpful comment, and I wanted to let you know that we have also modeled that and addressed it, and, um, it can meet the standards as designed. Um, so one other issue, uh, there were, um, some comments by, um, Mr. Fick about the issue of phasing, and I thought those were important for us to address as well. Um, the code doesn't limit phasing. Many types of developments are phased for lots of different reasons, including technology and industrial projects that I work on, um, across the state. And so we just want to reiterate that what we are asking for your approval on is just the site development review approval for two buildings and their ris- related site improvements. That is what's in the application, that is what's before you today. And if there are changes to the site, Mr. Fick is absolutely correct that another review would be required. And if a substation is going to be built, another review, it's conditional use review, so a lot more different standards will apply to that is required. And so I think we just want to make clear that we are phasing this project, but the review, we, none of the things that we are asking for approval of are being deferred at this point. This review covers everything we are actually asking for. If we want something different, changed, new, additional, we have to come back. Um, and I think that was what I had. Scott, did you have anything else?
Yeah, Scott Franklin with Navex. Um, I just want to reiterate that on the noise study, the, the noise generating equipment is between the buildings, and that was, that was discussed earlier, and, and just want to make sure that that is, is clear. Building two is going to block much of the noise from, from building one, and that's reflected in the noise study. That's also reflected in the, the slides that we provided as well.
Sorry, um, I think those are the rebuttal comments we had. Um, we're happy to take additional questions if you happen to have them.
Counsel Valen, is that fine for this, yeah, Counsel Valen Swila?
Thank you. Um, my question is, uh, also regarding one of the, uh, last testimonies that were given. Do you have a response for the concerns about wildlife, about the geese? And I, I'm saying that because there is, where I live, I also get that, that blessing of being able to see them. And, uh, and I know how important for our community is the environment. I really like your presentation, I really like that you emphasize all the benefits and working with the schools. But you know, the, our planet is in bad shape, because we have always traded money. You know, and we have sacrificed our environment for money with industries, with all these things. Do you have a response for those concerns? Do you have a response for the concern about, um, the impact that it may have in the water, in the soil that, that's under? Something that might, you know, fall into it? I'm not an engineer, so I have no idea. But if you could have a response, because I think that that's one of the greatest concerns. You know, we can learn to live with noise, I, I'm sorry, uh, for those that are concerned about that, but sacrificing our wetlands, our wildlife, uh, that's, you know, a, a whole different issue for some people.
I can address at least part of that. So, um, as far as the, the wildlife goes, um, you know, um, we did not study that extensively, because it was not part of the land use permitting process. That being said, um, we, we did talk to experts on sort of the urban growth boundary, uh, when it was set up. And the whole process around, as, as we understand it, around setting up an urban growth boundary was so that there wouldn't be sprawl and excessive development, both residential and industrial and light industrial throughout Portland. And so this was actually properly, you know, uh, zoned as light industrial, so that the rest of the land outside of the urban growth boundary, um, would be preserved for wildlife. So, um, if you obviously look on a, a map, Portland's very green, lot of preserves, basically, much more than many other cities. And I, I think it's, uh, a testament to that urban growth boundary. So, you know, we focused our search on sites that were within that urban growth boundary, that were properly zoned for data centers. And this is one of the sites that we, you know, identified that met that criteria. We have spoken with some of the residents about the geese specifically. Um, they've, the people that we spoke to said, actually, the geese actually land more, uh, in the clean water services area than, than this site specifically. So I, I, obviously, I don't live here, and we, but we have had quite a few conversations about that issue specifically, because we heard that in prior meetings, and I, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't, this isn't a nesting spot or anything like that, there's no, and, and that's not the case, as, as we understand it.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your response.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing, seeing none. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. I have a quick, can we take a three-minute recess for a bio break? Is that fine with the council? I would like to use the restroom. That's, I'm seeing a no look from Counsel Gustafson, or, okay, I was like, I couldn't tell. Is that okay with the council? A bio break, like three-minute, four-minute bio break?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to to our public hearing, and now we're going to give our staff an opportunity. Does staff wish to respond to any issues raised in the testimony?
Thank you, Mayor, very little, uh, the staff wants to respond to. Um, just a few little notes here, and of course, I write these notes, uh, in the hurried, uh, nature, and I can barely read them. But, uh, what I am reading on my page is that there was some reference to apparently, um, and I won't put it words in anybody's mouth, but there was some reference to the thirty-minute time limit that, uh, the applicant went over the thirty-minute time limit and that caused people to leave. I just want to be very clear and kind of get it on the record, uh, that that time limit applies to the presentation. It does not apply to any questions the council has of the applicant or of the appellant afterwards. So that time limit is simply for their presentation, not for the question-and-answer session afterward, that is not timed. Um, there is some, uh, question about the non-disclosure agreement. Um, just want to say NDAs are, are very common, uh, in land use proceedings. Um, there are all kinds of reasons why a company may not want to have trade secrets shared or anything like that. Uh, the important part is, all the NDAs that we sign, um, will, the city attorney will add language that, uh, allows all those documents to be discoverable, if they are requested. Um, anything provided to staff is discoverable, so those can be requested under public records requests. And that's about it, I think, you know, I, I think that we've talked a lot about tonight about different concerns and things like that. I mean, obviously, the, there are always reasons for concerns with new development, that's why we have this process. It's also why we have the standards in place. Standards in place are given to you because, are given to the applicant, because they deserve to be able to look at the rules, follow the rules, craft an application that meets rules, and have that application approved based upon the rules in effect at the time. What you've heard a lot tonight is not about the criteria, but about concerns. And that's not to say those concerns are irrelevant, they're certainly not, but they're not part of the proceeding tonight. They're not something that you can base your decision on. Concerns about power consumption, things like that, those, we've mentioned, there's a line extension policy. There's, there's other policies in place that, that sort of protect the city, protect the ratepayers, everything like that. But they're not part of your approval criteria, they're not a basis for your decision tonight. Basis for your decision tonight is simply a site plan review. Buildings on a piece of paper that now give the applicant a bit of surety to move forward in those processes, to work out the power issues, work out the water issues, which I don't, are actually present. Um, and, and, and give them the surety to move forward and, 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 and put those wheels in motion in areas that are going to take a lot more study and a lot more sort of look at and permitting in the process. That is all I have for clarification's purposes. Um, I will defer to the city attorney or to the senior planner, Dan, Dan Reardon, if they have any additional notes they want to share about tonight's hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, um, members of the city council. Um, I was going to mention the noise standards, but the applicant already addressed that the city's noise ordinances, uh, um, establishes a decibel metric rather than frequency, and the same with DEQ. The other, a couple of other things, the non-disclosure agreement that, uh, Mr. Poll is exactly right, those are fairly common. People don't want their trade secrets widely spread, but any non-disclosure agreement is, the city's obligations are expressly subject to the public records laws. So if we get a public records request, we have to disclose anything that's not exempt. Um, and then the last point that Mr. Poll made is critical. Um, for better or worse, state law says that these kinds of For better or worse, state law says that these kinds of, what's called a clause of judicial land use decision has to be based on the criteria in your code. And it's led to colloquialisms like it's referred to as the fixed goalpost rule. I had a developer say to me one time, we don't care what the rules are, we just want to know what the rules are. And those rules are set forth in your development code. And if the applicant shows that the, their proposal meets those standards, or either directly or as conditioned, then you need to approve it. And you can only deny an application if it doesn't meet one of those standards. So if you're inclined, you're thinking maybe you want to deny this tonight, please let us know what criterion you think it doesn't meet and then we can help you write the findings. Um, but that's the legal test for your decision tonight. And there's nothing in the standards about the noise ordinance, that's a completely different, different part of the city code, that's not part of your development code. Uh, power relationships to BPA are not, is not one of the approval standards. So again, if you're inclined to think maybe there's a basis to deny this, please let us know what criterion you think that is and we can help with the findings, otherwise your decision has to be based on the criteria in your development code. I don't have anything else unless anyone has any questions.
I, I have a question. I was a little confused during the applicants when I was asking about the 20-foot setback. They said, I, I believe their attorney said that since it was in the site plan, they, it had to be 20 feet. And then later on, I can't remember who, when they were testifying and said, well, we could add it as a conditional use. And so I'm wondering from staff's perspective, you know, I just, I guess what, I want to guarantee at least 20 feet and our code says 10 to 20. And so I just want to make, what do we need to do as a city to make sure that that setback is 20 feet?
So the, uh, the setback shown on the site plan, uh, adjacent to the residential property, this zone industrial is 20 feet. And that complies with the development code requirement. It's also 10 feet adjacent to the commercial, uh, property, which also complies with the development code. A standard condition of approval is that, uh, the project meets the site plan that was submitted and approved as part of the development process. It's just a standard condition of approval for all types of site development review. So that's the assurance, when they come in for their building permit, we'll check, make sure that they meet the requirements as shown on the site.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for staff? I'm seeing none, this is, I'm gonna, okay, so we're going to move on. Counsel, uh, would any counselors like to comment on the appeal? So we're going to have our discussion before the motion for this, so this is our time to discuss. Would anyone like to start? I don't mind starting, like, the discussion on the appeal.
Yeah, I, um, I don't know if this would be a discussion on appeal, I guess it's more of a comment, but, um, I, I just, I want everybody to know that, that we've heard a lot of information today and everybody who was for the appeal, I heard you, I absolutely heard you and I understand, everyone that is for the applicant absolutely understands as well. Um, this is the first step, it is the very first step. And we are in a judicial position at this point in time. And so we have to take that into consideration when we make our decisions, regardless of what the community is concerned with or what they, what they are asking for at that time. There's a process that we have to follow. But I would still like to, and I do this every time we're in a situation like this, I am amazed constantly at Forest Grove and the community's ability to step up and have their voice heard. And I want to continue to encourage that, um, every moment of every day. Thank you, everybody who was, who was here today.
Um, okay, so I, I think some comments I want to make in my deliberation is, and I've, you know, just a moral, it's always like a moral dilemma. And I think, you know, Mr. Feek, who I respect a lot, you know, made a statement about, you know, it's Indigenous Day today, right? And you're supposed to look at things seven generations in the future. And he said, you know, do you sometimes have to go against government to do what's right? You know, and I think in this case he's implying for the environment. Um, and then, so that question is what is right? Right, and your role and the position you have also impacts what is correct. And so then, you know, we have codes. We are required to follow the criteria for those codes. And I, you know, what is right to do is to do, to also do that. And some of the thing, the concerns I was hearing, I couldn't put with them not meeting a criteria of the application. It seemed like those concerns, which I can understand and empathize with, came later in the process for another jurisdiction to decide, for another gatekeeper or protective barrier on our earth to figure out how that's going to work. And I don't know, I mean, so that, I, I think, you know, my job as a presiding officer and as an elected person in Forest Grove is to uphold our code. And if we think that the code, I mean, I'm not going to lie, 75-foot building, I, I feel you. I'm like, what can we do about that? But that also shows us that we need to do work. And we can't retroactively apply what we should have done. You know, we can only try to do better next time if we think we made a mistake. So I think those are my discussion points, it's like, we really, I understand some of the things, but I don't know, if anyone else on council heard something that with the appeal, um, with the criteria, then I'd be happy to hear it.
Counsel President Rippey.
Thank you. The first thing I want to do is acknowledge the concerns of those that, that have been expressed this, this evening with regard to the appeal. They're legitimate concerns. They're, they are not to be dismissed by anybody up here or in the audience. They are legitimate concerns. They are legitimate concerns about human beings and their lives. Uh, and I have, I have a hard time, um, putting that aside in favor of an inanimate process of data. Human needs to me trump business or data or any of those other things. So they are legitimate concern. But the mayor is absolutely correct. We have a system of laws and codes that we must adhere to and we have to make decisions based upon that. And we've sworn an oath to uphold those laws. I also agree with the mayor that in our code, our code was, is was developed years ago and does not reflect necessarily the vision or the character of the town that we want to have. If I go back specifically to height, you look in that table, it, there is no criteria with regard to height for, uh, a building in light industrial. So then technically somebody could build a 400-foot building there and it'd be okay. That's not okay for Forest Grove, which we have a desire, that our people are desiring the vision of a rural small town. So we have work to do. We as, as a council has work to do to develop the code to reflect the character of the town that we want. And we have neglected to do that, quite honestly. I think that code has been done for way, has been that way for too many years. We've looked at the code with regard to equity, diversity and inclusion, but we also need to look at the code with respect to the kind of character of town that we would like to have. That being said, we do have to abide by the codes that exist today. And so I, I, uh, it, it is the first step in a process that's going to require many more reviews. And I, I cannot identify a, a criteria that is not met yet. I have a lot of questions about concerns, I have a lot of questions about the impact that data centers or other future businesses are going to have on small town environments. But I don't think that those are going to be addressed with a single site review. Application, that, that's a, a bigger question. Thank you, that's all I think I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel President, Counselor Martinez.
So I want everyone to know I am in agreement with what has been said so far. And you heard my heart earlier about concerns for community members. However, that is not part of the criteria that we are voting on this evening.
Counselor Valenzuela, Counsel Marshall.
I agree with everything that's being set up here. Unfortunately, we can't base our decision off feelings or emotion, anything like that has to be based off the facts. And the facts are that they've met all the developmental code requirements. So, um, whether we want to or not, I mean, that's kind of where we are at.
Yes, I'm, I agree with my, my colleagues, I am really sorry, um, that we're in this position, we don't really have, um, we don't really have a choice. Um, we are people that care for the environment, we care for you. Um, and this is very difficult for us. I just want you all to know that this is very difficult for us. I want good things for Forest Grove, I want us to have, uh, to do the best we can to preserve our, preserve our environment, our wildlife, particularly for our future generations. Um, so this is very difficult and I just wanted to express that.
Any other discussion? Okay, so is there a motion on the appeal?
I move to direct staff to prepare a final order to deny the appeal and affirm the planning commission's decision to approve the Crane data center site development review at 3975 and 3993 Heather Street. Land use application 311-24-000006 PLNG for council to consider on October 28th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Gustafson moved and Counsel President Rippey's second motion to, to moot to direct staff to prepare a final order to deny the appeal and affirm the planning commission's decision to approve the Crane data center site development review at 3975 and 3993 Heather Street. Land use application number 311-24-00006-PLNG for council to consider on October 28th, 2024. Um, will the city recorder now call the roll?
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Counsel President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yeah.
Counselor Marshall?
Yeah.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, the public hearing on this matter is now closed. Staff will prepare an order and written findings for consideration by the city council at its October 28th meeting. If there are no, uh, problems with that, I'm going to say we don't have council communications. And can I, is that okay with you?
I move to counsel. Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All those opposed say aye, hearing none. This meeting of the Forest Grove City Council is adjourned at 10:46 PM.